All this meeting order to the Board of Franklin County Commissioners Wednesday, May 25th, 2022, it's 8:30. Janet, roll call.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
President.
Commissioner Harris.
President.
Chair Dunn.
President.
Vice Chair Dickinson.
Present.
Commissioner Waymeyer.
Present.
Okay, now, Ryan, you can raise the flag of allegiance to stay up for the application.
To the Father of the United States, into the Republic which is in thy name, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning.
Morning.
Best pray. We're going to be taking our scripture reading out of Jonah, Chapter 3, 1 through 5. Heavenly Father God, we thank you for this day you've given us. We thank you for your many blessings you bestow upon us. And Lord God, we just want to draw closer to you. Verse 1, Chapter 3 of Jonah. "And the word of the Lord came unto Jonah the second time, saying, Arise, go to Nineveh, that great city, and preach unto it the preaching that I bid you." So Jonah arose and went unto Nineveh according to the word of the Lord. Now Nineveh was on an exceeding great city of three days' journey; for Jonah began to enter into the city a day's journey. And he cried and said, Yet forty days and Nineveh shall be overthrown. Five, so the people of Nineveh believed God, and proclaimed the fast, and put on sackcloth from the greatest of them and even to the least of them." Father God, we want to obey you. There's a price to pay for disobedience. And Lord, just help us to draw closer to you and serve you with all of our heart, mind, and soul. And Lord, we just give you the praise and the glory. Amen.
Correspondents, Derek?
No, sir.
Okay. Any power today?
No, we do not.
Okay. Consent agenda, we just have one item that's considered and approved Franklin County Commission meeting minutes for May 18th, 2022.
Move to approve this consent agenda.
Second. Ken?
Commissioner Sotomayor.
Yeah.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer.
Yes.
Chair Dunn.
Yes. Okay, the first item up for business is to discuss the ongoing viability of the Franklin County Juvenile Detention Center. Derek, do you want to start us off?
Yeah, thanks, Roy. This conversation obviously comes as no surprise to the five of you. It's something that we've been looking at for several years now. Changes to the juvenile justice code have resulted in fewer juveniles being placed in detention. And, you know, that's arguably a good thing, but when you operate a juvenile detention center, it does kind of force you to take a critical look at your operations and, you know, the amount of tax dollars that you dedicate to that. Got a pretty comprehensive presentation prepared for the five of you today. I'm expecting Brandon Jones any minute. He will lead us off and talk, in fact, here he comes, he'll lead us off and talk about the changes to the juvenile justice code. I don't expect, and I told him this, an in-depth legal analysis, but more of a broad overview about how we got here, maybe a glimpse into the future, what that looks like. Then I'm going to have Janet take you through our housing numbers over the last several years, our budget numbers over the last several years. One of the things that you're going to see is that during 2021, and we know COVID affected this, but when you look at our budget and you look at the number of kids that we had, at one point, it was costing us $3,500 a night to house juveniles. And so our numbers have come up some, but the numbers paint a pretty stark picture. Once we complete that portion of the discussion, I want to talk about other considerations because there's a lot more to this. There's policy considerations. We've got a day school program, and to that end, I've got Dr. Cobb's here to discuss that, how that may affect 290, if it does at all. We'll talk about truancy corps, we'll talk about visitation, continuity of services. From there, we will explore other uses of the facility. Got under Sheriff Laswell here to talk about, you know, what it would take kind of from 30,000 feet to operate it as an adult facility. Dustin Browning's here to talk about what absorbing juvenile intake into community corrections would look like. And then we'll just touch on other miscellaneous matters such as other JDCs that have shut down or considered it. Job placement for our existing JDC employees, should this be a decision that you want to make? And then, you know, and Janet will touch on this too, but the budget ramifications of shutting down the JDC and what that money could potentially be put towards. And so with all of that, I would invite Brandon to come up and just talk generally about the juvenile justice code and where we're going to go from here.
Good morning.
Morning.
President.
So I was just asked to kind of give you guys a brief overview, kind of an aerial view, not like super detailed, but basically what's happened in the juvenile justice world. I don't remember how long ago, I want to say it feels like it's been forever ago, but I think it was maybe five or six years ago, our Kansas legislators decided that they got influenced by the, I think it's called the Pew Institute, an East Coast think tank, that the way to handle the juvenile justice system was not to incarcerate juveniles, that basically once a juvenile went into the system, whether it's just for a night in the detention center or definitely if they went to a youth correctional facility, which is the juvenile prison up in Topeka, that that would have a far greater impact towards making them essentially career criminals. So the thought was, is that instead of being overly harsh and punitive on punishments towards juveniles and putting them in detention here at our local detention center or giving them sentences in youth correctional facility, we would do what they call family functional therapy, where they thought the idea was to get into the homes, to try to provide them services in the homes, try to give them counseling, support that way, and keep them out of the juvenile justice system with the aim, that thinking that that would then keep them out of the adult justice system. They pulled in two prosecutors from the state without talking to, we have a very strong organization, the Kansas County and District Attorney Association, which is our state association. I just finished serving as a president of that organization that we feel very strongly about, that does a good job. Instead of coming to us and talking about that with us and trying to get information, they kind of ambushed us by, they went and grabbed two prosecutors that no one even knew were on the panel. And by the time they released their recommendations to the House, they had basically had everything full speed ahead and said that they had the prosecutors in the state on board with this. We threw up our hands like, whoa, we don't even know what you're talking about. And we finally figured out there were two members from smaller counties that had been on this panel and that were in support of this. The Johnson County District Attorney's Office, Don Hymer, who's probably one of the foremost experts in the state on juvenile justice, as well as Ron Pascal, who's Sedgwick County, came forward and tried to testify to how devastating this would be, that this was not a good idea. But it was a ship in motion that there was no stopping it. The Pew Institute did a good job of getting their talking points in place, and it got passed. I can't remember the number, it was Senate Bill 57 or something like that, I'm not sure the number, but it got passed. Since that time, it would have basically did is made it to where it is extremely difficult for us to detain someone in our local detention center for very long at all. There is an assessment that has to be done when they come in and there's multiple, Ken can tell you more about this, but there's multiple points that are scored, it's based upon the seriousness of the crime, their past criminal history, family support, all kinds of multiple options, but they have to score a certain number to even be eligible to be detained. And I can tell you that in most cases, that doesn't happen. The only cases where we're really seeing people get detained, juveniles being detained, is extremely serious crimes. If it's a sex crime or even a high-level person felony, those are the crimes where we can actually detain. Gone are the days of being able to have someone stay in the juvenile detention center for the night for a fight at school or drugs or something like that. And maybe that's good or bad, I'm not trying to, I guess, pass judgment on at this point, but it is what it is, and that's kind of where we've come. If they are detained, it's required, and I believe it's every seven days, again, I don't do, I haven't done juvenile for the last three years since I've come here, I have a juvenile prosecutor who handles this, but I think it's every seven days we have to have a detention hearing, a review hearing, for the court to determine again whether or not they can be detained. Since that time, our numbers in the juvenile detention center have just dropped. We have, I think, I didn't, haven't got the sheet today, but I think at last look, we had, for the last several weeks, we've had two people in there. One of them was ours and one of them was from Anderson County. And the person we have in there is for a very serious person crime. So we can still detain for extremely serious crimes like that. In fact, I think we might be filing a motion to waive him to adult status. It's a bad enough offense. Other than that, most people will stay there for maybe a night before or two before they're out. It goes, and this is not for you guys to worry about as much either, but it's almost darn near impossible now also to send someone to the youth correctional facility. It used to be that if we had kids who'd committed serious crimes, we could eventually send them, you know, to the youth correctional facility for a sentence, just like we would an adult, and that's almost impossible now. The other thing is, we, a lot of kids, they try to keep them even completely out of the system, we have what's called IIP, which stands for immediate intervention program. So any kind of misdemeanor, if it's their first offense, we can't even file charges against them. We're supposed to send them to this IIP program, which is run by court services. If they successfully complete that, then we don't even file a case on them. Some of these things may be good things, but what we're seeing is, is essentially from our perspective, is that juveniles are quick to, kids need consequences, in my opinion. If you don't give them consequences, they figure out there are no consequences and they can keep doing it. So what we've basically had is that, at this point, a lot of them will just thumb their noses at us. They know we can't do anything to us, to them, they tell us we can't do anything to them, and they're essentially right. Well, the sad part is, is what happens is they go through that through several years, and the second they hit 18, then they're in the big boy court, and they still think that. And we've got a couple, I can name three cases right now, of kids who went through our juvenile system once this new law passed, that basically got no help, and now they're sitting in our jail with serious charges. One of them attempted murder, one of them's breaking into cars all over. We've got serious, and now adult problems because it was never taken care of at the juvenile level. But essentially, as far as like the aerial view, aerial view is that it's just very difficult for us at this point to detain people in the detention center or to send them to the youth correctional facility. So that's, I guess, getting to your point, that's where we're, that's the reason why you're not seeing our office put people in that facility. It's not that we're not doing our jobs or not trying to use it, it's that we can't. So I guess with that, I'll open the floor to any questions you guys might have of me.
I might lead with a question, Brandon, do you, and I understand you can't predict the future, but, and I don't know how closely you follow the legislature, but do you have any reason to believe that there may be a reversing of course on this, a change in the laws that make it so that it's a little bit easier to put them in detention?
So I do follow it, as being a board member of KCBA, we have weekly calls, every Thursday at lunchtime, we have a legislative call all throughout the legislative session for us to stay on top of legislative items that affect Kansas County and District Attorneys. There has been no mention at all that offer of, that being said, it's an election year, I know that a lot of members, including the two members of House leadership, have stepped down, so there's going to be a whole different legislature up there, but I have heard no mention that this is a proposed legislation coming down the pipe. Our organization has not proposed anything. We tried to fight against it, and then we kind of, basically, we got run over and told it wasn't going to change, so as far as I know, no.
Do you think that, and, trying to think of how to articulate this, that...
I had the same question, so I guess Pew Research, or the Pew folks, they put in obviously a lot of effort, a lot of time. It has to be a real groundswell to get something changed in this, and you haven't sensed at all any of that coming from anywhere.
It's not like they changed one law or two laws, they completely basically rewrote the juvenile code. It was a complete overhaul of the juvenile code.
Almost convinced everybody to change culture and get on board.
Correct. And we do, I guess, what I would answer is, in criminal justice, we see that kind of pendulum swing back and forth of like, we get tough on crime, and it goes that way never once we pass harder, tougher laws, and then we realize that our prisons are overcrowding, and all of a sudden, it seems like the pendulum will swing back the other way, where we need to be more lenient, we need to do more. And so I think throughout time, you do see that happen, but I have not seen any indication that it's swinging back the other way. In fact, to me, it's still, the pendulum in the criminal justice system is for actual adult criminal justice reform to mirror the juvenile. That's more the trend, is to try to start doing this in the adult world rather than come back the other way.
And I appreciate you saying that, that was going to be, I guess, my question. It seems to me like that pendulum is more on the lenient end of the spectrum, and as a society in general, we're trying to move away from incarceration, whether that be juveniles or adults. And I gleaned from your comments that you would agree with that at this juncture.
Yes, they're talking, I mean, a big national movement on the adult side is bail reform, we shouldn't be holding people in jail before they're convicted on cash, using money as a source of bond, there needs to be bond supervision. And yes, there's a lot of, you know, of course, and a lot of this, we, I agree with as far as like the need for mental health, better mental health and better drug rehabilitation to try to keep people out of our prisons, our prisons are overcrowded, but the reality is, in cities where, I guess, progressive prosecutors would come in, Philadelphia, St. Louis, places like that, and they've gone that way, you're seeing a drastic increase in violent crime. Because unfortunately, there are some people who just, when they're out, they're going to be up to no good and doing a lot of harm. So, but yes, that's the, the pendulum is still swinging the opposite way. One thing I would point out though, is if something were to change here and the detention center were to be closed, I'm sure you obviously thought about this, but that means the people we do detain, because it does happen, we do have someone in there right now, you guys have to figure out someplace to put them, and it's not just, it might be cost effective, whatever, like if it's $80 a night to keep them in wherever, but like, well, I was talking to Kim Robinson, my deputy county attorney who handles this, and she says that in the past, we've sent our people to Shawnee County or Riley County. And so it's not just the cost of housing them, it's the transportation cost and the problem on law enforcement transporting them there as well. So it is a huge hassle and stuff, and so it is nice to have it here, for sure, but right now, I mean, with the way the system is, it's hard to put people in it. Not that we're trying to fill up the beds or something like that, I'm not trying to suggest that, I'm just saying that there are some people who we, I think, probably should be, we should be utilizing that facility for that we're unable to.
And certainly appreciate those comments. We've broken down fairly specifically the cost of farming out, including the transportation costs and other opportunity costs, so we'll get to that data. But want to be sensitive of Brandon's time, very busy man. What questions do you guys have for him?
Only a question per se, but I know, we talked about this at Budget Time last year, I asked you to explain to us why or what, and that was a good interpretation of what you just said now. And I know this was a lot of topic while we were at Slyna County Commissioners deal that's come up at several tabletops and stuff, and there's a lot of other entities that are closing their juvenile center, and I'm just hoping there's still enough of them open somewhere, that, you know, if we do, you know, turn back the other way, let's say Riley, Shawnee closes theirs, and Riley closes theirs, I mean, you know, I hope it gets to that point, I mean, you know, where there's nobody to go to them, but, and people who need to realize, we didn't put the facility over here because we had a juvenile problem, we put the facility over here because we had an adult problem, and we opened up more space down here where the juveniles were. And we've seen that it was a lot cheaper to do a juvenile detention than it was expand on our adults, so. But if they just passed these laws about five years sooner, we wouldn't, we may still have a position to have to take now, but we wouldn't be sitting there with a new facility trying to figure out what to do afterwards.
Brandon, is this kind of a universal thing, from state to state, what you're talking about?
I know that when Pew came in, they used, and I can't tell you the breakdown of the states, but they've been going across, they were at the time going across the nation trying to get this in other states, and so they used other states as examples of how this could work or whatever, so I'm not sure on the breakdown, but I know the Pew Institute, I want to say they're from like Baltimore, it's East Coast, something East Coast, but yes, that was a big movement at the time. I haven't really followed it that closely, honestly, as far as juvenile, I followed the adult, like the swings in the adult, you know, system, but...
You cannot imagine, if that's your objective, you see Kansas as low hanging.
Right.
Try and get to buy into that mindset, so.
Yep, it worked though.
Then they got the dogs.
Yeah. I really don't know the breakdown of what other states have done, but I know that that was a national trend that was being pushed nationwide.
Yeah, we just hear mostly on the news about prosecutors on the adult side, being very lenient and not doing anything, so we hear that every day on the news, so.
Right.
I have a question on what you said, but you didn't have the specific answer on it, and maybe somebody else does about the exact date or how long? We've been working on this for five years, five years ago, we were still at 181, so our number's all COVID, or was it three years ago, and that's when the number started dropping?
Ken, do you know when it was that the law was passed?
2015?
16.
16.
Do you remember, what was the Senate Bill number, Senate Bill 367?
So the numbers in 2017 were still at 181, and that was after it'd been passed?
Yeah.
And 148 in 2018, so are we making a decision on, because we are on COVID numbers? I don't know.
So, on my end, I am, at that time, I wasn't here, but I was in Anderson County and Osage County, and I do know that pretty much as soon as that law went into effect, our numbers as far as being able to send people up here went down. It just, under the law, it just became difficult to detain people for us. We used to use it too, like as a sanction, like if a kid messed up on probation, we'd send them there, kind of, we called them in the adult system, quick dips, basically like, you're going to spend a weekend at the detention center because you, and try to get them back on track, and that's kind of, that option's gone away as well. I mean, the day detention center school was a great option for us too, we used to try to really utilize that, and I used to want to use that for truancy, thought that made a lot of sense for truancy, but then they took away all ability to put truance in there, but to me, that made sense, if you're missing school, then you can go do school in the detention center. So, but then, we can't even use that for truancy anymore. You're not allowed under the CIN code to detain juveniles in a detention facility.
Well, thank you, Brandon, I don't know, any more questions? Thank you for giving us that overview.
Thank you, appreciate it, thank you.
All right. I think from there, I would like to transition to Janet and/or Ken to discuss, you know, historical housing numbers and then kind of walk through the budget implications of that. We'll also have them talk about farm-out costs, transportation costs, and the potential effect that we would project that having on the budget, so.
Yeah.
So Ken and I have worked together to put together the information that you have in front of you in the spreadsheets. So the first thing on there is, is what the budget has looked like since 2017. So in 2017, we budgeted $720,900, but our actual spend was only $580,751. So as you know from our, all of our budget, we have to budget a little bit more to make sure that we have enough to cover all the expenditures that we have. Additionally, Ken's had a fair amount of vacancies over the years, which has resulted in a lot of savings in staffing costs. So those are kind of some of the differences between the budget and the actual. I won't go through all of the numbers, but I'll just remind you that 2021 is still unaudited, so that number, the actual number likely will be a little bit different than that. So in 2022, we have $622,749 budgeted for the juvenile detention center. So in the next section, Ken has prepared all of the numbers of juveniles we've detained in the facility, both total number and Franklin County are separated out there, and then total bed days for all of the juveniles that we housed, and the bed days for just the Franklin County people. In the top section there, we've compared it against our budget to break it down, what the cost of a juvenile was in our facility compared to our budget. So when we compared the, when I compared the Franklin County juveniles to our budget, I used it without reimbursements because the reimbursements in our budget come from housing other out-of-county kids. So when you look at the light blue column there, cost per Franklin County juvenile, that is our total bed days for Franklin County juveniles, divided into the actual spend column. So, and then likewise, the cost per total juvenile is the total number of bed days divided into the actual spend with reimbursement. So you can see in 2017, 2018, and 2019, we would consider those actual years where we didn't have the effects of COVID. So obviously, our low, our low cost for juveniles was in 2018, where we had $252 a night for a juvenile, and if you only consider Franklin County juveniles, it would have been $461. Obviously, like Derek mentioned, in 2021, when we were under the effects of COVID and not, even under, even more strict rules, I understand, Ken, correct, to house juveniles, we housed significantly less, and so our Franklin County juvenile detention rate was So, have any?
I was going to say, with, in 2020, 2021, there was quite a bit, obviously with the Senate Bill 367 as part of it, but then COVID, just a lot of, a lot of juveniles were not being arrested at that, at that time, mainly because of COVID and probably wanting to keep them at home, keep them safe, things like that, so.
And, you know, that's what makes this whole analysis difficult, is obviously, we know COVID did have an effect on this, but we also know that, that we didn't know, you know, the COVID pandemic started in March of 2020, and prior to that, we, you know, we didn't know what the COVID pandemic was, obviously, and I would just point out, and I'm just trying to point out what the data shows. Seventeen, you were at 133 Franklin County juveniles, eighteen, you were at 100, so 33 less, nineteen, you were at 79, so 21 less. You know, there's arguably a trend there, and then of course, COVID hits in 20, and that falls off precipitously, but we feel like there is at least enough data there to show a trend.
Six years of data, three years before COVID, three years after, you're down roughly 50 before COVID, you're down about 60 after, so COVID, like you said, sped it up, but it's actually fairly consistent as far as the trend on both sides of the line.
Just for clarification, in 2022, the numbers that you see there are for first quarter only, and so for calculation purposes, we multiplied that by four and figured that on what, what we could project. So we don't have anything else to go on to say the numbers would be any different, although I will remind you that in the beginning of the year in 2022, we did have a COVID spike, so we were still under some COVID protocols. So it could be a little bit different than that, that's just our best guess for projections for 2022, so.
Yeah, and that's the other piece of this, I think, that goes without saying, but I want to put it on the record here, these are projections, and there's no way for us to know. It's why we pulled Brandon in here, that's why, I mean, we don't know, I mean, there could be a slew of violent juvenile crimes, I mean, that is conceivable, but based on what we know historically, it may not be likely. And so, yeah, you look at our projections for '22, you know, it's going to be about 68 juveniles at a cost of about $996 per night to house them, and that number will become more significant when we look at what our farm-out costs would potentially be.
Just to kind of find a couple notes on the, this section, right there at the bottom of the columns is the average cost calculation. I used 18, 19, and 22 because 18 and 19 were the two years prior to COVID, and 22... and twenty-two might be what we look like coming out of COVID. And so we're at an average cost per Franklin County juvenile of seven hundred and forty-seven dollars per, per night, and three hundred and eighty-six dollars per night for all juveniles that we either have seen or are projecting in our facility. So, one other thing to note, that when we get back to the, when we get back to the limited scope budget, like if we were to eliminate housing juveniles here in our county, we still pay utilities for the whole facility, including the sheriff and the attorney's office out of this budget. So about forty-five thousand dollars a year of this budget goes to gas, electric, water, and mowing for the facility. So, just wanted to throw that in there.
What are we paying our detention workers about?
Hourly, we're starting at fourteen twenty-two.
Fourteen, so if we, this doesn't include any potential two-dollar IRAs that we're hoping to be able to implement, so.
Yeah, not the twenty-two numbers, no.
So, I figured labor costs about, well, that's without health insurance, but about seventy-two percent of your budget, so if you went up, or ten percent on labor would be another forty, fifty thousand a year?
Yeah, I, I think Janet has prepared a two thousand twenty-three budget projection that is just under six hundred and ninety thousand, so that would be.
But that does not include the potential increases that we're looking at.
Okay.
And we don't know what that looks like, if that's a, a full two dollars an hour for, for this staff, or if that's, you know, less than that, we're not sure yet.
But to your point, Cole, that's already almost thirty grand above what our twenty-two budget is, and that's before you factor in any additional.
Does anybody have any que- questions about the cost based on budgeted amounts? If not, we'll go on to cost based on farm-outs.
I'm gonna pause you for just a second, Janet. You know, thi- this whole process can go as, as slowly and deliberately as you want. And if you need time to digest this and, and want to have another meeting, want to have another couple of meetings, whatever you want to do, we'll do. But we are all here, so if you have questions, please ask. I mean, this is a great time as staff for us to walk you through these numbers and help you understand anything that you may be struggling with. So, if it all, I mean, Janet's done a great job with this, so I think it all makes sense, but if not, please stop us, because we'd love to help you.
Definitely agree, we've put a lot of time into this, but we really want you guys to feel comfortable in making a, a solid decision. So if there's anything else that you're questioning about these numbers, or would like to see anything additional, we're really happy to, to bring that to you, so. Okay, so we'll go on with costs based on farm-outs. So you can see the numbers are exactly, we, we took the numbers from, that we'd been using from above, and we applied those to farm-out costs. So it's kind of small down in the corner, but you can see what the housing costs of other facilities that are available are. Our lowest cost options are Douglas, Wyandotte, and Johnson, yay, they're the closest to us, so. So, I will note something that we talked about a lot, Ken and I, is that Shawnee is, has taken a large jump up to three hundred dollars a night, so double what the other facilities are, but I think you talked to Douglas County, and they're, they are not considering going up, so.
Brandon said they usually use Shawnee or Riley, and I don't see Riley on here.
I don't know.
I don't, no, I, I don't, I just don't think that's accurate.
Yeah, I don't, we've never used Riley. We've only used Shawnee and Douglas in the past, and that was only because somebody that was brought in, a family member worked in the facility, so we had to, we couldn't hold them there, we had to put them somewhere else. So we've had to use Shawnee County and, and Douglas County in the past, but that's the only ones we've ever used.
And literally as of this week, you've spoken to Douglas County's JDC director, and she's given you assurances that they will take our kids, is that correct?
Last week, they, we talked with, I talked with Pam, the director there, in, in Douglas County, and they have no problem taking the kids, as long as they have room, of course.
How many can they hold?
I think their facility is eighteen.
Do you know that they currently, they usually run average?
Do not, so, but they, we, I, we discussed a contract with them, but they do not want to do a contract, it's just the basic one fifty per diem, so. We just need to contact them, and we do have a, if we do have a juvenile that needs to be placed in detention, and see if they have the, the beds available, so.
And, and that's something that, and I'd, I'd have no doubt Ken was told that, but that's something I may explore with the Douglas County administrator, because I, there's no reason why we can't. I, I, I wouldn't understand why we couldn't do some kind of formal arrangement via contract. But yeah, we, we've been given assurances that, that their per diem is one fifty a day, they don't anticipate that changing. And correct me if I'm wrong, Ken, but Douglas County was one of the facilities that almost shut down, is that, I mean, they were heavily discussing it even up there, so that, that tells me that they're not overcrowded. I mean, they struggle with the same things, would probably welcome the opportunity to house, or that's, I think you can draw that conclusion, so.
So continuing on, you have three, you have three cost figures there. You have the cost of farm-out low, the cost of farm-out high, and the cost of farm-out average. The low, obviously, is based on the facilities that are a hundred and fifty dollars a night. The high is three hundred dollars a night for Shawnee, and then we took an average at two twenty-five to, in case we had to potentially send some to Shawnee and some to Douglas, if for some reason Douglas couldn't house, or, or something else, although you can see we have two other facilities to choose from at a hundred and fifty dollars a night, Wyandotte and Johnson. So if we could get them to take it instead of going to Shawnee, but we just wanted to provide you some options to show you that it may not just be a hundred and fifty dollars a night. Additionally, some costs that are, are really difficult to project are what it would cost for additional medical care for kids above and beyond the contracts that take care of the, the everyday things, the, the stuff they need when they come into a facility. So, those are not included in this farm-out cost, but we did include a number for that back in the budget, so we'll get to that in just a little bit. So, those are the numbers based on the years that we've projected, seventeen through twenty-two, based on the actual numbers that we're looking at. And you can see for our high year at a hundred and thirty-three juveniles would have cost us two hundred and thirty-nine thousand five hundred and fifty dollars to farm out our juveniles. If we jumped up to an average cost, sending some to Shawnee and some to Douglas, we would have been at three hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars to farm those kids out. Obviously, low years looks, looks pretty good, so, but we wanted to kind of give you some averages, so you could see where we might realistically be, so in the green box at the bottom, the first number is, Ken has, Ken has figures going back many years, and our average juvenile's length of stay is about thirteen. That's, that's a pretty solid number, and Ken said it does not change very much. It goes up a little bit, it goes down a little bit, but thirteen was a consistent number that we kept drawing out of the numbers. So we figured that's on average length of stay at thirteen nights. And then we used eighteen, nineteen, and twenty-two to figure out an average number that we might be actually looking at, and we settled on eighty. So eighty juveniles at thirteen nights each, based on the low-cost housing option, would be a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars to house them. If, on the average, cost would be two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. And then the average cost with, with a higher juvenile count, a hundred juveniles in a year, would be two hundred and ninety-two thousand five hundred.
And, and to be crystal clear, Janet, you are taking the average stay, which Ken has, has gotten from historical data, you are multiplying that by the average number of annual juveniles, and then you are multiplying that again by the per diem rate, which is one fifty on the low end or an average.
And two twenty-five on the average, yep.
You know, can I ask a question on this one? I mean, we got, I mean, I, I know we need this conversation, totally need, but, but we still would be, I mean, that's the number it would cost if we didn't do anything here and we farmed out. But how much administration would we still have, even though we're farming everybody out?
Yeah, we're gonna get to that.
Okay.
That's part of the conversation we're gonna have with Dustin Brown.
Okay.
Just in terms of, because one of the things to discuss is, this is just juvenile detention. Regardless of what the board elects to do, we are still gonna have to do juvenile intake. And there's still important programming that I think we'd all like to see happen, that is gonna require certain staffing numbers. And so all of that will be discussed momentarily.
Thank you.
That's just, that's just the cost of the per diem, but you still have to get them there. Every week they get us, they go before a judge, you gotta go pick them up, bring them back, so they can go before the judge. So we take them back.
If they don't, we resume, yeah.
So Janet, do you want to walk?
Do you want to skip to the transportation costs now? Okay.
Well, just, just pers, we'll get to the transportation cost, just proceed, Janet, without you.
All right, so the next thing, if you turn the page, the next thing for consideration is that we still have facility costs. The facility costs for our juvenile detention center are not in the juvenile budget. We do not pay for them out of the juvenile detention budget. The original cost of the facility was three point six million dollars, and it was funded with bonds back in two thousand twelve. Which, like Dawn said earlier, if the reform had came five years earlier, then we may have not been talking about this right now, but the reality is, is that we have this expense now. We refinanced the bonds in two thousand twenty-one, two point six million dollars we, we refunded, and they're set to pay off in two thousand thirty-one, which is, and that is on the original schedule. We, when we refunded the bonds, we did not extend the term or anything like that. Alls we did was lower the interest rate on it, so that we could get some cost savings based on lower interest rates. Our, our current balance after we make the two thousand twenty-two payment in September will be two point, roughly two point two million dollars. The payments are made from the annex revenue and, and not the juvenile budget, and we will continue to pay that even if the facility is, is closed to juveniles. Okay, so the next thing is the transportation cost that Ian was asking about. So again, we use the number of juveniles that we, that we had determined in the, in the earlier scenarios. And we figured that, we figured that they would probably need three trips, one to go up there, one to come back, and average per juvenile, one additional trip somewhere in there, you know, so, you know, obviously, it's a trip up and a trip back, but not everybody's gonna need an additional trip, so we just figured three trips for each juvenile.
Janet, that, that is based, I mean, that number came from Ken, based on his expertise, having ran a JDC or, or been involved with a JDC for a couple decades, is that? I mean, that's based on what you've kind of historically seen.
Able to utilize video for a lot of the court?
They do, we have been, because of COVID, obviously, Zoom has, Zoom Court has been a big thing. Not for sure when they'll go back to doing regular court and things like that, but it is a possibility for us to use Zoom. So that was kind of, instead of going with the higher number, that's why we stayed with the lower, just because that's a possibility of, it may be up and back one time, so.
Yep, so we've, so we use three, three trips per juvenile. You can see that we, I, I looked up the addresses of all these facilities, I mapped out each one, so we could determine the number of miles that it would take to get, to get there and back. So it's twenty-eight miles to Douglas County, so there and back. It drive time of forty, forty minutes to get there. It will cost eleven dollars and eighty-seven cents to get to that facility, and that's based on four dollars a gallon fuel, so.
That's just one way?
No, that's round trip. Twenty-two fifty-seven for Wyandotte and fourteen oh two for Johnson, so. So if you look down in the blue box at the bottom, if we were taking all these trips to Douglas County, so three trips per juvenile, based on the average juveniles, eighty, it would be two thousand eight hundred forty-nine dollars and sixty-eight cents in fuel costs to transport our juveniles up there.
I know, but fuel, but do we trigger labor too?
No, we did not, we did not, because that, that would be normal staffing. Like I think it was mentioned earlier, the officer that brings them in would be responsible for transport.
Would we have to use a sheriff's officer or a juvenile detention officer?
We would have to, it would likely be sheriff's officers or police officers.
Say that, those are still discussions we would have to have, I mean, that, that may be OPD officers, and we'll have to have that discussion with them and with the sheriff's office, certainly.
What is our rate, what do we charge other people?
One thirty a day.
One thirty? It says more cheap, you would think maybe we'd get more, but we don't get.
We have been, we've been getting kids from all over, actually, Butler County, Harvey County, with places like Hutch, Reno County, sorry, being whether they're short-staffed or just full, Sedgwick County being, having, only taking Sedgwick County kids. So a lot of those places down there, we've held for Oak County, Cali County recently, so. They've been calling and bringing them all the way up to Ottawa. But that's another thing too, that we'll, we can talk about later, that, that cost, and, and how those costs have, have gone up in other places. Like she said earlier, Shawnee County is up to three hundred, Finney County, they went up to five hundred actually, and then dropped back down to two fifty, so.
You've got the data in front of you, Ian, that shows with all of those juveniles we've been taking, what you've got total juveniles and Franklin County juveniles and cost per night on that front page.
Any other questions about transportation costs?
Hopefully they can do it by video in the future, all the video, having them transported back and forth, but is what it is now.
So I will share with you that we did, in, in a limited scope budget, we did put these transportation costs in there, because as Derek said, we have not had conversations yet with, with the sheriff's office or OPD, and, you know, we just haven't had those conversations, because we want to know what direction we might be heading before we have those conversations. And so we wanted to include that in there and not expect that the sheriff would bear the burden of all the fuel costs of driving up there. And, and we didn't want to go ahead and put that in his budget when we don't know that this is going to happen, so we needed to show it somewhere. So we wanted to go ahead and include it in the juvenile budget, so you guys could get an accurate representation of what shutting down the juvenile facility means to our budget. Because whether we pay for it out of the juvenile budget, or we move it over to the sheriff's budget to give him some more freedom in his fuel line, then it has to be in there somewhere, so. Okay, I know it's, it's rather small, but, so we'll, we'll go over to the actual budgets now. We have entered in our figures that we think are likely for the two thousand twenty-three budget if the facility continues to be open. You'll see, other than salary numbers, there is not much change in this budget. Ken moved a few things around. The, the biggest jump i- is in an other contractual, and, and maybe you can speak to that, what?
The other contractual is the, the camera system, just the service that they provide. Last year, we, it ran out, we renewed it for. Last year, we, it ran out, we renewed it for, I think it was sixty, six, six thousand six hundred dollars for the year. And so we're just adding it into next year's budget, because we'll need to renew that again, so. And we hadn't had to put that in there previously, so.
Any wage adjustments we did would be on top of that, right?
Yeah.
So what we're showing there is the projections with the two and a half percent merit raise and the coal raise, which I believe right now is in there at one percent.
At one point six.
One point six, okay, one point six. So it's the same as what we, what we had in our budget this year. So an additional twenty-one thousand dollars in salary numbers, so that's the biggest change in this budget.
Most of that's health insurance, are we expecting our health insurance to go?
We always budget for a ten percent increase in health insurance. But yeah, as, as you all know, we've been discussing the need for a wage adjustment above and beyond our annual pay plan. And, and I would expect this budget to be one of them that is affected. So I think the six hundred ninety thousand that we're projecting is certainly low.
How many employees do you have?
Currently, there are.
So we're, Ian, we're budgeted for twelve for full-time employees and four part-time employees. Some of those are paid for out of the community corrections budget. Hey Janet, do you wanna progress on to the-
Any questions about this budget before we move on to the limited scope budget? The last page is the limited scope budget, and Derek can kinda speak to this, but we have eliminated all, all the salaries in the limited scope budget. And the only things that we have left in this budget are the things that will, will still remain even after the facility is not used to house juveniles anymore. You can see, I already talked about the utilities, the gas, and other contractual services, which is the mowing expense. So the whole entire juvenile facility and additionally the main part of the building that mostly houses the sheriff's department and the attorney's office, all of the utilities are paid out of this fund. And that's because prior to the sheriff and the attorney being over there, all of the utilities had to be budgeted in the juvenile budget, because they were the only ones over there. When the sheriff and attorney moved over there, it didn't seem like any logical way to divide up the utilities, so we decided to leave them in this budget. So you can see twenty-one thousand there for utilities is budgeted. We did go over that last year, but that we had a significant weather event that caused extremely high rates. So we don't think that it's out of line to continue budgeting twenty-one thousand. Ten thousand for gas service and then an additional six thousand dollars for mowing. You see there, an inmate housing line, we put the hundred and fifty-six thousand, which if you go back to that very first page, that is based on the low cost at the average number of juveniles, eighty, eighty juveniles, average length of stay thirteen nights at a hundred and fifty dollars a night. A hundred and fifty-six thousand, so that's what we put in there. If you look down on medical care, it's, we put a thousand dollars in there. Ken and I went back and reviewed what we had spent on medical care for our juveniles in the past several years. And a thousand dollars seemed like a likely amount for what we might spend paying other, another facility who, for our juveniles that required additional medical care.
In the last, it's been almost twenty every year, so what is the difference between the one thousand and the twenty that you actually been spending?
That is our contract with advanced correctional healthcare, the, the nursing that comes in. They take care of seeing the kids for their medical needs, unless they need to be sent to the hospital, and we have to take them to the hospital for whatever reason. But they do the TB tests, physicals, things like that. And then of course, medication verification and, and all that, they take care of it.
That's something that they would be doing at the facility where they are.
And the thousand dollars that we, that we came up with is, because with ACH, they do repricing. So any bills that we get from the hospital and things like that, they do repricing for that, so it's a lot, lot lower. Which I would imagine wherever we go, Douglas or, or whatever, they would possibly do the same thing, but I'm not for sure if they have that.
Also, we still have advanced correctional with the, with our adult detention facility, so we would likely be, have access to that continuing service. And we could use that for our juvenile bills to get that pricing lowered down. So a thousand dollars is what we put in there. And then you can see down below, forty-two hundred dollars for fuel cost is what we put in there. I mean, as we discussed back here, you know, we could be looking at twenty-eight hundred dollars if we took them all to Douglas County. But we didn't want to put only twenty-eight hundred dollars in there, because Douglas County is the closest facility. And we likely at some point would have to take juveniles to another facility. And you can see there, back on the transportation cost, if we took kids to Johnson County, it would be close to thirty-four hundred dollars. And if we had to go to Wyandotte, it would be fifty-four hundred dollars. So we wanted to come in with some, with an average, so we make sure that we cover our fuel costs. And as you know, we figured this on four dollars a gallon, and we're looking at four oh-nine at the pump right now. So we wanted to make sure that we had enough in there to cover the fuel expenses. So for a total, that's one hundred ninety-nine thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars in the limited scope budget compared to the full two thousand twenty-three projected budget at six hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. And so that would create a projected savings of four hundred and ninety thousand two hundred and fourteen dollars if we went to just limited services for juveniles.
And I would point out with that number, I mean, four hundred ninety thousand dollars is a huge number. But that is also using what is likely the low end of the farm-out costs. So that has that one fifty-six number in there. So I would say that four ninety probably represents a very best-case scenario. But I, I think that, you know, unless something changes, you, you're over four hundred, I suspect. Breaking much of a sweat, so, but I would say somewhere between, you know, four and five hundred thousand. These projections don't include, so we've talked to K-Camp, and K-Camp has told us that if we're no longer operating a JDC, that, that they would project our insurance costs coming down, you know, eight or ten thousand dollars. So that would be another potential savings. I mean, there's little wrinkles in this here and there, but I think between four and five hundred thousand dollars is probably, again, based on projections. I mean, we just, we don't, we don't know, but-
What you're really trying to get a figure for is your opportunity costs. You have two diverging points, what things, if we kept doing what we're doing now, what that would cost, which we know is gonna trend up for various reasons, but. And then are, you know, the unknown of where we, what our other option is, and you're measuring that difference, and it's just a, a lot of variables there.
And there's no salaries in that, like you possibly might need still have, or we don't know.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna need salaries. And, and again, that's one of the things we're gonna talk about with Dustin. But, but one option would be to full juvenile intake under community corrections. Make Ken an assistant director in community corrections. That would include another full-time juvenile intake officer in addition to the part-time ones we have. And you will recall in the last week or two Dustin discussing additional grant money from the state of Kansas for juvenile services. With that additional money, we could pay for all of Ken's salary. We could pay for all of the additional intake officer's salary with state money. And so we don't have salaries on this, and we're not expecting Dustin to absorb it in community corrections, because there's additional funding available that, that we believe, we hope, is not a one-time thing, that it is a perpetual moving forward.
So and to be clear, when we talk about transporting juveniles to these other facilities, that would just be sentenced juveniles, intake would still be here. So when they're picked up for doing something, it's not till they're, they're sent to a facility that we'd be transporting them, like when they're sentenced?
Right, when they're arrested, they'd still be brought to intake here.
Well, I guess they'd have score on that, not necessarily sentenced, they'd have to be score on this. That's scaled to qualify to go up there, but you're still-
If they qualified for detention, then that's when transport would happen.
So not every kid that's brought in for intake is actually put into a facility?
Correct.
What percentage of kids would you say that are brought in on intake or ultimately put in a facility?
Um, well, I have those never-
It's okay, spitballing.
I would say-
There's very few kids actually qualified.
Yeah, I would say at the most, maybe twenty-five percent. And that's, that's kinda on the high end right now, just recently, but.
Any idea what your intakes are per year?
Yes, they're over, we usually have over two hundred intakes a year. But that, that doesn't include just Franklin County, that's for the whole district, so, or between two and three hundred a year, so.
That, in, different individuals, or that's maybe some one individual being more than once?
Yeah. It, it happens, yeah.
You know, I, I commend Janet and Ken, they worked hard on this, and, and I feel like they've done a pretty thorough analysis here. Do you, you have any questions about the, you know, the potential budget implications, the financial piece of this at all?
We, if we shut down the facility, where would the kids go for their initial intake? Will they go to the, where would they go?
Can I jump in, because I, I wanna, I think the semantics are important. We, the proposal, if, or the option wouldn't be to shut down the facility. I mean, the facility, we would shut down the detention piece of it, but we currently do intake there, we currently do sink there. That could continue to remain the case. I mean, we would envision continuing to do intakes from that very building, right where they sit today. And so intakes, sinks could all stay right there, and we wouldn't have to disturb that por- portion of our operation.
Okay.
Any questions on the finances?
I don't have any further questions, I might have questions of people, why we should stay open. That'd be my question.
And, and I think that we're about to get into that. So the, the financial piece is one piece of this. And, and I think that's the easier part, because financially, I think there's a fairly clear picture in front of you. But there are multiple other considerations, and that's what I would like to pivot to here. One of our programs, and, and I'm gonna get him up here, because I wanna be sensitive of his time, is day school. And Dr. Cobb's was generous enough to be willing to come speak to that. So, so Dr. Cobb's, do you wanna come talk about what effect, if any, yeah, a, a potential closing would have on your district?
Yeah, so you guys have a difficult decision in front of you. And as a leader of a district who's had to make difficult decisions on processes in their buildings, certainly don't envy your, your situation. With that said, my, my role here is to not talk about the viability of the juvenile detention center, but simply the process that, that we are involved in with the juvenile detention center and how the juvenile detention center impacts USD two ninety, because it's certainly a, a, a collaboration of, of entities. So there, there are really multiple provisions that we have that utilize the juvenile detention center as a means for us to drive instruction and education of students, one of which is day school, one of which is actually instructing incarcerated kids, one of which is instructing kids that are not ours. Right, so each of those work in, in some differing capacities. But ultimately, we provide an instructor for the juvenile detention center that provides instruction for day school kids as well as incarcerated kids. Those kids that are incarcerated that, that are ours, really no issues. It's a pretty seamless conversation. Those kids that are incarcerated that are not ours, and you heard Ken talk about people from different counties that are coming in. They fall under different guidelines in terms of how we can educate them, and ultimately, there are some things that we have to take into account. Our, our budget currently consists of about eighty thousand dollars for the teacher that provides instruction to the juvenile detention center. And during COVID, we've received very little reimbursement for that, those positions. We get reimbursement from the state based upon the number of students that are, that are incarcerated and provided services for. As that number has reduced, we can't reduce our staff. Three students still take a full staff member, twenty students still take a full staff member. If that reimbursement number has, has dropped, and it has, last year there were almost no students, based upon, so that eighty thousand dollar budgeting capacity and authority that we have for that teacher, we saw no reimbursement. So we took an eighty thousand dollar hit on our general fund, because there were no students within the juvenile detention center that provided us reimbursement. This budgeting cycle, again, we budgeted about eighty thousand dollars for that teacher, we'll see a reimbursement of about twenty-nine thousand dollars. So when you saw numbers for seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, we were receiving almost full reimbursement, and that position was not costing the district dollars, an additional taxpayer dollars. And the time since COVID, and, and again, as we see numbers continue to reduce, those numbers are now coming out of USD two ninety's general fund. And subsequently, we're using USD two ninety taxpayer dollars to fund the instruction of students who are not USD two ninety students or Franklin County students. And so there's a lot of different components that, that exist there. And, and the other piece of that is that some of those students are receiving identified services from the state, because they're either on an IEP five oh-four, whatever that happens to be.
What is an IEP?
So if they're identified special education, they're on, they're on an IEP. If they have other impairments that result in different strategies needing to be provided to them, they may fall under what would be a five oh-four. Both of them are, are legal documents that require us to provide particular services, specific services for how we educate them. When they're not our students, they result in some different things having to happen. And subsequently, we have several recommended actions for remedy from KSDE, because we provide special services to students who are not ours, which is actually really not allowed, right? So because juvenile services do not, we used to see intakes of up to like twenty-eight days. And when we had students coming in for twenty-eight days, it became very simple. We would go through a process, we would transition them to our schools, they became our students, we would keep them for the twenty-four days, we would transition them back to their schools. Now we're seeing students for like three days, five days, two days, whatever it happens to be. And so that transition process doesn't occur anymore, because we still have to provide services for them, right? Once they step foot into the juvenile detention center, we don't get to say we're not providing services for you for three days until we get this to occur. So the transition doesn't occur from student, from their district to our district. But we still provide services, which is really a no-no in, in special education. It creates a, a number of different issues for us moving forward. The more that we contract services out, which is, which is, will be one option that I'm sure that you all will consider, and I heard Ian asking questions about, that I think we're leading to, if we raised the, the, the value of what we were charging other people to come into juvenile detention center, would that help offset some of the costs? That may be beneficial to the county and, and a good decision for the county. It impacts the district in a number of other ways that ultimately we will, we will bear the burden of it as we move forward. But again, that's neither here nor there in terms of your decisions, it's just something that we'll have to deal with. The day school-
It would affect the taxpayer.
It would affect the taxpayers, absolutely. The day school piece of this will be something different. Day school is predominantly limited only to Franklin County students. And, and the day school occurs when a student is not incarcerated or in detention, but is remanded to the juvenile detention center for a portion of the day to attend school. Typically, it's because they've had some issue, as, as Brandon was talking about, we used to see it a lot with, with students who were truant. I mean, if you weren't- I mean, if you weren't going to school, you're gonna be remanded to day school, you're gonna be forced to go to school, you had to go to the detention center uh to attend school. That doesn't occur anymore, but we still see students who are um struggling with outside behaviors that that are resulting in uh issues within the court system that are placed at the Juvenile Detention Center for school. If if the detention center were no longer in operation and day school became um a a a process that went back to schools, a couple of things again to consider. We currently provide the services for day school for all Franklin County schools. So if a Wellsville student was remanded to day school, we're providing the services for them. The Central Heights student were remanded to day school, we're providing the services for them. If the if the detention center went away and subsequently, day school went with it, I think it's important for you all to know that USD two ninety would not provide services for Wellsville kids. We're not, we're not inviting that into our district. Uh, so Wellsville, Central Heights, West Franklin would all have to figure out how they work with Judge Kimball and the other judges that that may make those determinations as to how best to provide those services for those kids. We have a a a a system at at Eugene Field through uh our Engage program that I think we could provide day school services and work with Judge Kimball and and the other um judges to determine exactly what those services look like. Uh, if behaviors are not appropriate, what that means for them, how we work through all of those things, we can do that fairly readily.
One thing that might be worth noting is just the number of students we're talking here. So prior to the juvenile justice um code changing, we were seeing ten to twelve students in day school at a time.
That's a really useful tool.
Absolutely. Now, because of the limitations that county attorney and judges have, um, I think this year, our average has been a single student at a time that's accessing day school. So we're not talking the volume of students that we were.
About kids from the other districts?
Oh, that's that's total count. Like what we'll see is we'll see students in that will move between incarcerated and day school somewhat fluidly. I mean, I think our highest count day, we have three count days over the course of the year. Our highest count day with incarcerated and day school combined were five students this year. Uh, where previously, we would see fifteen to twenty, which made it easier to um to reach this the dollars that we need to run the program. But we're not talking the same volume of students that we were a number of years ago. We've already developed programs to meet some of the needs of students who um, you know, would have been there four or five years ago and and are back in our system now.
And did that five, that five high days, that includes some kids that weren't from our county?
Yeah, oh, yes. Yeah, cuz typically, what we'll see is our numbers will start out really low in September and they'll kind of grow over the course of the the school year. Um, but that was, I believe, April twentieth this year was our our high count day, um, at five students.
So from a day school perspective only, a- and and please disagree with me cuz I don't wanna, you know, I don't wanna put words in your mouth. But the two of you feel like two ninety ha- has put enough programming in place that you wouldn't be adversely affected should the JDC close from a day school perspective?
The the reality of it is, is that once juvenile justice laws changed, we operated a day school under our roof anyways. So the the volume of students that actually went to the JDC for day school diminished so greatly, most of those students were working through our systems anyways. We can expand that and we can, we can envelop any additional students that we need to with that. And certainly, we have a great relationship uh with Judge Kimball and we can, we can have discussions on what that needs to look like and how it, how it works out. But yeah, we, I mean, at this point, I don't know that we feel that um not having day school would impact us so adversely that that we wouldn't be able to operate effectively. I think with with that being said, I think it's also important to recognize that that currently USD two ninety has a great relationship with Ken and and the Juvenile Detention Center um a- and and with Community Corrections and anybody else that's going to be involved in in the the changes that 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 the county has to consider. Um, again, our job up here is to not talk about the viability of the Juvenile Detention Center, that's that's not our role. Um, they do a great job in in doing the best they can for the students that that we have there. From a USD two ninety perspective, Juvenile Detention Center has cost us money over the course of the years and cost our taxpayers dollars. Um, and day school has changed at such a rate that it it really doesn't provide the same capacity that it did at one point in time when we were seeing the most bang for buck with day school. We can, we can encompass those programs as we currently sit. Um, and I don't know that the the instruction of those students should be a determinant factor uh for for you all. And we can make sure that we address those, who we can address, Wellsville students, West Franklin students and Central Heights students.
And I I do want to ask you about that, though. Um, obviously, you and I worked very closely um during the COVID pandemic.
Yep.
Um, and and we work closely with the other superintendents during the COVID pandemic. And I will tell you, a- and this should come as no surprise, but the other superintendents, um, I know look to Dr. Cobb's for advice in so many situations. And and while two ninety couldn't accommodate kids from other districts, would you be willing to discuss with your fellow superintendents what it is that two ninety is doing and maybe help facilitate programs in their own respective districts?
Yeah, one thing that that COVID has done uh for schools across the state is that it's provided different opportunities for us to drive instruction and it has forced us to consider different opportunities to to drive instruction. Remote learning has uh really created an alternate path um that becomes readily available for all of us. Uh, all of all of our districts can can contract with Green Bush to provide remote instruction currently and and you could ultimately run a day school through a virtual platform, uh, which is not a lot different than what's currently happening. So from an instruction standpoint, we have a teacher there, but the but the platform is still a digital platform. Uh, our instructor is not teaching math and they're not teaching social studies, they're not teaching science. They're facilitating a digital platform. All of our districts could provide that same thing and 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 their own capacity and what they're capable of doing. And certainly, we would be open to conversations with them and as to how we can make that work. Yep. Any other questions for me?
Uh, do daycare at Eugene Field, is that where you do that?
Uh.
Day school?
Day school.
Yeah.
Not daycare, same deal.
Well, we've had to utilize Eugene Field um to provide educations to students who would in the past be day school students. So I I can think of several kids in my in my head that in seventeen, eighteen and nineteen were were being provided services through the day school at the detention center. When the, when the just- justice laws changed, many of those students came back to us because they were no longer gonna be detained and the day school system changed quite a bit. And so we figured out how to provide services for those students with in-person instruction through our program at Engage at Eugene Field. So to answer your question, yes, um, we would, we would utilize that program as well as additional programming to make sure we met the needs of of our day school students as we move forward.
What age group do you have for day school?
Uh, typically, it is six through twelve. Rarely, uh, if ever, have we seen elementary students. And I'll, Ken, you remember, we've not provided elementary school students.
I mean, they can be truant too, I just didn't know.
They can, typically, the justice laws, I I don't think any student under the age of ten can be incarcerated at this point or detained.
Um. Sure, and I have to tell my grandkid that I was wrong.
Uh, a- and and the reality of it is, is that I think law enforcement tried very hard not to, not to deal with fourth and fifth graders in that same capacity. And it it certainly does have an impact upon them. Um, it is, it has typically been secondary students, middle school, high school students that we've, we've worked through in that. Other questions for me?
No, thanks for coming in. I've, I was educated during that.
Uh, no problem, and and certainly, if this conversation continues and you have a- additional questions, uh, just let Derek know, I'll be happy to to come back in and address anything.
Do you want to add something, something to Dr. Cobb's, um, what he had to say? Yeah, with the change, we did have, it has decreased, it's it's gone down. Uh, previously, the judge, the judge has to order the kids to day school. Uh, previously, he could order any, any case, a child needed care case for truancy, um, a kid that's on battery, things like that, any any kind of case that is in front of the court, he can, he was allowed to order them to day school. Um, of course, we work closely with with Dr. Cobb and and his school district. Um, they knew when they needed somebody that they wanted to stay in detention, um, or sorry, day school. You know, they would work, we would all work together and just not make that decision. Uh, with the change, the the truancy cases that that were in front of the court are no longer allowed to be placed in day school. So that took away, like I said, quite a bit. Um, now it has to be a a juvenile who's on probation or a juvenile who is in court. Doesn't have to be for truancy, it could be, it has to be for misdemeanor or felony. Um, but it could be because of truancy, that the judge makes that decision to put him in there, so. If they're on probation, they don't want to go to school, um, that's the one thing anymore. That the, that the court does have, um, they can place them in day school, so. That was.
Thank you. Thanks. Um, you want to stay up here, Ken? Other, lot of other, day school's one program. Um, we we also have a truancy court program and my understanding is that's gonna continue or i- that would continue regardless of any decision that the board made, is that correct?
The outreach program.
Yes, the outreach, yes.
Um, we have two, two truancy programs. Um, we had started the truancy court program back in two thousand and twelve um to help reduce some of the child needed care cases that were in the court. The truancy court program basically gets a child in front of the court, in front of the the judge, without actually having a case um to try to prevent them from, or to get them to become legally no longer truant, sorry. Um, these are kids that are, that's kind of, the way it starts, um, if they can make it through that program, great, they go on. Um, they don't have to deal with court anymore and they don't have an actual case on their file. Uh, if they continue to be truant, um, and do not graduate that program, then of course, the county attorney's office files a child needed care case, goes back to the court, an actual court. Uh, and then that's where we step in and we start visiting with those, those juveniles and their parents. Uh, we work with the school districts, things like that, to um kind of a liaison between everybody to try to get them, find out what's going on, help them with whatever resources they need to make sure that they get back into school and uh and stay in school and then, of course, get through the case. Um, that is a program that we are currently doing still. Uh, and then, of course, if this uh, the detention center goes away, it's it's another program that can still be moved over possibly under uh Community Corrections as well. Um, and have a a case manager work w- with those kids. I believe the truancy court program, we started it, it was under us, uh, two thousand and fourteen, I think, fifteen, it went under uh, actually, it went under CASA and then in two thousand and sixteen, it ended up under the court and it's been there ever since, so. Um, but still work closely with with Emily, who does that program uh through the court system for outreach as well, so.
And other than day school, is there any other programming that that you offer that would have to go away?
Um, programming wise, that's, we have JDC, we have, or detention, we have the day school program, we have outreach and then intake. Uh, of course, intake would have moved underneath Community Corrections, we talked about that too, so.
When taken outreach would continue?
Correct. It would just be detention and and day school, if detention goes away, um, because of the licensing, we would not be able to have day school, so um, day school would disappear as well and it would just go back to those students um having to stay at their original school and and them dealing with that, so.
None of these programs, including incarceration, has ever tended to be punitive. Like especially for children, the idea was to use it as a tool to set them on the right path. And taking that away was really a decision that was made with the criminal justice reform, not regardless of what we decide here today.
Right.
It, that decision was made years ago when that legislation went through. So if we do uh kind of go the way we're deciding, it would be a money saving, but is there anything you know, any service, any um other option to get that intended result of kind of, I mean, obviously, we're doing what we can and and you weren't waiting for me to ask, but if we do end up with a cost savings, is there anything else we could potentially direct that towards to get our intended result of uh putting kids on the right path and getting a corrective action early to?
I mean, I, the whole point of that study, I think, was uh, in Kansas, you know, we, we try to do our best. Um, and we were at the top of of the list of states that were removing kids from the home, whether it was foster care, detention, things like that. So that was why there was such a big push um after that, uh, few um payment did their their study with the state and things like that.
You might have overused that tool.
You, yeah, you you heard Brandon talk about that and um, a- and so, I mean, the big point was to re- remove kids from detention, keep them in their homes, um, not so much foster care, but use that money instead for prevention services and.
That's, I guess, what, um, you being in that that field, that industry, it's your passion, what other services are available that might have that positive result?
Well, and that's the thing around here is it's not as much. Um, I mean, we have ELC who does quite a bit with services, uh, Community Corrections. They have different services that they provide. Um, we have tried with the detention center, I've I've worked to do, bring in different services, worked with Life Care Center, um, Dickinson's husband to to provide, you know, um, religious education and things like that. Um, Life Care Center, we've even reached out and went as far as um, as Lawrence for, they were sending somebody down um from Willow Domestic Violence to do classes with some of the kids, things like that. We were seeing a lot of those, trying to, just what we've seen over the years, basically, is, you know, that class there from Willow was human trafficking. We were seeing a lot of kids at the time, especially females, who were being put in detention because they were running away from their placement and that was a chance that could happen. So we wanted them to have that education while they were with us. Um, now starting new programs and things like that in the community, that's, I mean, obviously, we'd want to go with something that was evidence-based.
Yeah, and that's what I guess, uh, just asking you.
Right, I mean, so, you know, it'd be, be researching that and what we really need around.
If there are opportunities to.
Opportunities, yeah, and what we might need in this community if if this is not here, so.
You know, one of the i- if the board were to decide to to close down the detention portion of our facility, one of the reasons why placing intake and outreach under Community Corrections, one of the reasons why it makes so much sense is i- is frankly, um, Dustin, I mean, he's so passionate about what he does. We have discussions all the time about different ways we can reach the target population, different programming, different, and I think just with his passion on the adult side, and there is very much a juvenile portion to what he does as well. I I think that it will give us, it will absolutely give us the opportunity call to explore evidence-based programming uh to that target population and things we can do. So um, I am excited about the potential possibility to do some of that and and I think Dustin's gonna tell you that he would be too.
Yeah.
So.
Ken, I got one question. What, what about the kids that uh drop out of school, quit school? Uh, they don't want any part of the. They don't want any part of, uh, further education at that, they decided to quit school. What, what category are they?
Well, we, I mean, we work with, we work with a lot of those kids through the truancy, uh, program. They want to, they want to drop out, of course, obviously without a, with a parent signature, they can do that at sixteen. But if without a parent's signature, they couldn't drop out till they were eighteen. That's just the statute. But of course, when we're working with them, we do whatever we can to try to keep them in, in school. And of course, so does the school district and, and things like that. They're kind of coming from all sides as far as that goes. But if they do drop out, I mean, there's, as far as truancy, truancy court, things like that, there's not much we can do about that, obviously. If the, if the court allows them to, to drop out of school while they are on the outreach program, then more than likely they're gonna, they'll keep the case open and make them go get their GED. And so we set them up with services through, through, uh, Neosho County to get their GED and then once they get that, then we close their case. But as far as day school goes, we have, if they, if they drop out, obviously, that's kind of up to the judge as well, because if they're on probation or in court, he kind of has a say whether they're allowed to drop out or not. But if he allows them to drop out, then obviously there's no reason for them to come to day school. Now we do, we do have some kids, we had one this year that's been basically with us all year long. Because he was expelled, long-term expelled from, from school, cannot return till early next year. But since he's in court and now, now on probation, he is, he's one that's, that comes every day. When he's not a, a resident, he's, he's a day school student. So. But yeah.
Other policy considerations, um, that I think the board needs to consider. You know, visitation, you know, I, I mean, these are local kids, um, and I think a lot of visits are now occurring via Zoom, but you take them out of the community, then parents, uh, family, whoever's inclined to visit them, they're going to have to travel to Douglas County in all likelihood, and, and that could affect the number of in-person visits that the juvenile receives and, and that could affect, you know, the juvenile. I, I think local resources, um, a lot of these kids are working locally with, with, you know, maybe it's ELC or other programs within the community. And that's to say nothing of, of, you know, relationships with healthcare providers, other entities within the community that may be disrupted, um, should they be placed outside of the community. And I just think that those, you know, those things need to be given weight as well.
Which, like you said, visitation, um, we're, we're required to provide contact visits for, for the families. It's not, it's not like what you see on, in, in the TV shows and things like that, where you're talking on a phone between windows. It's an actual room where they're allowed to, to hug each other and talk to each other and have contact. Which is a very, very good thing, of course, for the kids' mental health. During COVID, we, we had to put a stop to that. And we were doing most, most of our stuff over Zoom, which worked, we allowed them more visits, more phone calls, things like that. So they had that opportunity because it wasn't in person. But, you know, which was great, their parents, their parents were, were very happy with that. And, but now we're getting back to that point where we're going to, we're having contact visits again, which, you know, of course they, they love even more. But having to drive to Douglas, like you said, um, things like that, there might be financial constraints on the, the family. Um, and they can't do that. So that kind of takes away from that from them. Which is also another issue with, can cause mental health issues and, and if they already have mental health issues, can make things worse by not being able to see their parents. That's just what the kids, sure, all of you are parents, you know how that is if you're not seeing your children either. So. Uh, and the, the toll it takes on you as a parent. But, um, but yeah, and even education. Dr. Cobb's talked about the, the issues that they have when we hold for other counties. When they come in from other school districts, things like that, uh, the issues that they have to go through to get them wherever these kids end up going, they're going to have the same issues there probably. So. Even if they're there for seven days and four of them, they don't get any education, can't continue that. How is that going to affect them later on? But, and it may not at all, but still, it's.
Any, any questions for Ken, um, about just kind of other policy considerations associated with this decision?
It looked like it, uh, I think it'd be a good time to take a break.
Yeah, I agree. You want to take ten minutes?
Yeah, let's take a ten-minute break, come back about, uh, ten sixteen.
All right.
Thanks, Ken.
Thanks.
Okay, let's get, uh, let's get started again.
Roy, you want to give the gavel a pound?
I think it's quiet now.
Give it to me, I'll do it.
I wanted a two for one today.
Okay, Derek, go ahead.
Thanks, Roy. So I, I think now I'd like to discuss, um, if there are any questions up to this point, I would like to discuss other potential uses of the facility. The, the first a- and, and one of the obvious ones being to use it as an adult detention center. I've got Kyle here, Kyle has prepared, um, a memo and, and I have him here to, to flesh anything out that, that you guys may need. I, I will give you a general overview. So from a staffing standpoint, um, they work twelve-hour shifts. Obviously it's a twenty-four, seven, have to cover seven days a week. They would need four of those twelve-hour shifts to do that. On each shift, he anticipates needing three corrections officers and one corrections corporal. So if we were to operate this as a jail, you're looking at probably sixteen additional staff. I will tell you, corrections officers, um, are more expensive than juvenile detention officers. The staffing costs, and this would be salary and benefits, and this would include other miscellaneous, um, expenses like increased staff training. We would anticipate being between one and one point million dollars annually. So, uh, just the, a- and, and then you got to look at farm outs. So, and I'm giving you a very high level overview, please understand that. But in, in twenty-one, our farm out costs were around eighty-eight thousand dollars. Twenty-two, what are you anticipating, Kyle? Something around that, less, more?
It's hard to tell right now. I think we have four farmed out right now, but we just released and brought back a few. So, um, they're lower right now. But it just depends on what happens.
Well, even if, if you looked at, we kept it at eighty-eight thousand dollars for farming out. And then let's say it costs you, you know, between one and one point one to staff it. And, and you remove our farm out cost from that, which I think you would say we're still going to have to, even if we use this as a jail, you'd still have to farm out from time to time. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yeah.
You still have some inmates that you just can't have in-house?
That's correct. Yeah. For various reasons, whether it's charging or medical or any, anything similar to that, then yes, they have to go somewhere else sometimes.
So having talked with Kyle fairly extensively about this, I mean, we think one point one million dollars annually, if anything, is probably a bit conservative. And so, but if you could remove the lion's share of farm out costs from that, then, then you're sitting at about a million dollars, a little bit more annual operating costs. Our current twenty-three projected budget for the JDC is six hundred and eighty, somewhere right in there. And so if, from just a financial perspective, if we wanted to operate the facility as a jail, and this is just staffing and, and other small miscellaneous costs, it's going to cost the taxpayers several hundred thousand dollars a year more. Now, what we haven't addressed is we couldn't use that facility as a jail today. It is nowhere close to being ready to be used as a jail and, and I know you don't know this, Kyle, but, but, I mean, is it seven figures? I mean, you're looking at at least hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars to, to turn that into something suitable for adults. And you could be above a million. We don't know. But the, the picture I'm trying to paint, a- and we can get into as much detail as you would like, if there's interest, is that it's going to be far more expensive to operate it as a jail. And the reduction in farm outs is not going to dent the additional cost. So what kind of detail, what kind of info can Kyle give you?
Well, I guess that'd go back to the whole reason why it was built in the first place would be because of the cost of being an adult jail versus being a juvenile detention. And that's why, the big reason it was all done in the beginning, because the cost was going to be like three to four times more to do a adult-centered versus putting in the juvenile. So you, that, I mean, you know better and you know better than, than us up here, the requirements you have to follow. But you have to build a building since you've been there. So we don't know what has changed. You'd almost have to go to somebody right now like Lynn County that's actually building one. Or Coffee County is getting ready to build one and find out, I mean, it, it wouldn't be an exact, but at least you could get some of the ideas that, that, that they're having to meet. You know, but they're doing it from another perspective. It's all brand new. They don't have to come in and revamp the whole thing. They just had to build it.
Right.
Immediately. So that's where I guess, you know, I don't have nothing against that. That's, we got to use it for something. It just can't sit there, you know? And it, it's a golden opportunity and that's what presents us with that issue is using it. And that's what else is better to use it for than incarceration? You know, just I guess it gets down to what it's going to cost us to reset, to make, meet all the state and federal guidelines.
Well, not only that, but levying the additional tax dollars to cover the very large gap between what it would cost us to operate as a JDC and what it would cost us to operate as a jail. And, and, and you've looked at this, you, you have examples of things that we would need to do. Do you want to just discuss a few of those? Like the ceilings and the porcelain sinks and all of that?
I mean, I don't know that, that this meeting might be the best place to discuss a lot of those for security purposes.
Waste your time. It's clearly not a viable option. I mean, I appreciate the legwork you did. It's good to be able to, hey, we've considered it. This is why, you know, show due diligence.
And I think one thing to think about when we talk about this too, is, um, they mentioned having the juvenile intake over there. If it were to be a jail facility, we, we wouldn't be able to do that either. We wouldn't be able to have juvenile intake over there. We'd have to use that, that front part of it up there where the booking room is, um, for, for adults. And you can't, you have to have juveniles away from adults for obvious reasons in jails. So.
And how many prisoners would you have now that would you consider as a low-risk, uh, weekenders?
Oh, boy. Um, I'm not sure how many, um, how many, we call them court commits. I'm not sure how many we have right now. I think we have probably around five or six of them right now. We also have a work release guy, um, that, that we still have. There are probably some other, some other people in the jail that we, we would consider lower, lower risk. I'm not going to call them low risk, but lower risk that we could, that we could house in that facility. But even in our, you know, our day room at our jail, where the lower risk people are, we still have fights, we're still pulling, you know, contraband out of, out of ceilings that are actually security ceilings. We still have issues that would have to be addressed at, to try to prevent at the JDC facility now. I mean, just because it's, just because it would be a minimum security facility doesn't mean that we, we have to, we can slack on security. So.
I know, we went to Colorado when this was built, the study, went to the jail out there. They had another, a separate area that they just used for, uh, lower-end weekenders and so forth, you know?
Yes.
But they closed down, on the weekends even, they would close down that section. And so until it was closed down, prisoners could go all sections, but on the weekends and, and the low offender time, then they closed down that section. The only, they could be there and didn't have to meet some of the requirements that the other did. And Colorado could be a whole different.
Yeah.
Set of rules.
And I think, I think with this setup too, with the, with the two jails being separated across town essentially, there would be a lot of movement back and forth um, between staff and inmates if, if that were to be the case. I think that'd be just, that'd be difficult to do. That'd be very difficult to do.
One thing I would say, and I think a warm hole that we're, you know, have to be careful not to slide down, is when we discuss what other options are, and something that was said I don't agree with is that, well, we have to do something with it if we're not going to do this. No. I mean, that same logic would say, you walk out into the hallway, a guy's falling on the ground, falling on the ground, you say, what are you doing? He saw it, better hit my head. Like we don't have to do one, uh, you know, pick one other thing just because we're not doing another. We can mothball it. If policy changes, you know, at the state level and, and juvenile, uh, serve, you know, incarceration becomes an option again, some of those tools come back to the prosecutor and the school district, like the facility's still there. In the meantime, what always uses we could do, maybe not the highest and best, but we don't have to pick another use just to, you know?
Is there always a chance of offices or something like that in, in there?
Yeah. I mean, I, I, I think, and, and Dustin and I have talked about that. It's, there's going to be, it's going to be hard to not realize that you're working out of a JDC. But I think it's a possibility. And, and I'm going to keep saying this because I think it's important. We will still use the facility. We will still do juvenile intakes there. We'll still have a sink room there. Like there is a detention portion of that facility that, that may not be used, but it might, because Dustin and I have talked about that. So a lot of that facility would still be used. Again, as Kyle said, that goes away if we were to turn it into a jail and then we would have to find room. And I don't know where, as I sit here, to do the intake stuff, to do some of the sink stuff. I just, I, we don't have that space.
So tell me, so I'm going to do my ignorance here. Explain sink, sink. Explain the sink room.
Ken, do you want to come up and?
Child needed care.
Yeah, it's child needed care, but just specifically what we offer.
Okay.
He can speak to it more.
What we have right now is, we call it a check sink room, child needed care. So when youth are brought in as child needed care, they're usually through police protective custody, they're being removed from the home for some reason. Most of them are younger kids. But it doesn't stop, you know, it's all the way up to seventeen years old, um, from birth on up. And so instead of those kids going over to the booking room where it looks more like a jail, more jail setting and things like that, we would try to keep them away from that.
These are victims.
Big victims.
So we do, we do emergency foster care for a while, bringing in kids for.
Those same kids. So we have a special room that's more set up for a child, um, with beds in case they have to stay the night or things like that. While we're looking for replacements. There's.
Thank you.
Several toys.
And, 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 and you're being serious because we have toys. We have, I mean, sometimes you get like kids, like little kids.
We have toys.
It looks like a bedroom with a.
Oh, yeah. I had infants. I had five-year-olds. I had, yeah.
Yeah. So, I mean, we get donations from, from different places around. Um, we get ladies group in, in Williamsburg does blankets every year and donate them to us. Home, we give those to them. They, they can choose which one they want. With stuffed animals and clothes, if we have the clothes, it'll fit them and things like that, because they come with nothing. So. Yeah, that's our secret.
Yeah, no, and that, that, I'm glad you asked that, Ian, and, and that just illustrates, helps illustrate that the facility would still be used for that, like in a very valid. the facility would still be used for that, like in very valid, you know, honorable use would still be existing there. So, um, certainly would still be using the facility. Um, Kyle, I, I appreciate your feedback. It is best not to, to get into specific renovations that would be needed. But suffice to say, they are there and they are extensive, um, should we want to make that change. Um, I, I'm comfortable with, with the staffing costs. Um, I think we are, if anything, conservative, but I think those numbers, the, the 1.1 ish million are solid. Um, you know, we could bring in people if there was a desire on the board and we could get actual hard costs for turning that into, but that's a, an extensive process.
It sounds to me like you're doing the same thing of what you're doing with the younger kids. You're trying to do the same thing with adults. It costs more money. We're trying to shut this down while we're getting into something that's costing more money again for taxpayers.
I mean, eventually probably the county is going to have to discuss jail and the future of the current jail and the potential of what we're going to have to do there. I'm not sure we want to do that right now though.
Well, the feedback I am getting is that there's, I think generally there's not a lot of interest and, and further exploration of using this as a jail. Is that, Roy, I haven't heard from you, but I, three of you seem to agree with that.
Yeah, it sounds like repurposing it for a jail is going to be very expensive. I don't think you're going to gain a whole lot of space. I don't, I don't, I can't imagine a whole lot more. Uh, cells, I would guess you'd call them.
What would be the most you could put over there? Can you put two? Are there's twelve?
If, if we, there's fourteen cells, but I think if we put bunks in, I think the, the ceilings are high enough that we could put two people in, given that it's an open day room. Um, so probably twenty eight for short periods of time, maybe just a few more, but not, not past that.
That seems like that's pretty expensive for that sort of thing. Um.
Well, um, said the same thing about Ken and Janet. Um, Kyle's put a lot of time into this and I appreciate that, Kyle. Um, um, thing I appreciate about him is he is so prompt and, and we asked him to do this and it was done immediately. Um, done very thoroughly. Um, and I feel comfortable with what he's presented. So uncomfortable with the info that we've given you. So if you have any further questions, I mean, thi- this meeting, this item isn't going to culminate in us asking you to make a decision today. I, I want you to think on it. Um, so certainly you can continue to think on this piece. But at this juncture, I don't tend to do anything else with regard to, to turning it into a jail. So any more questions for Kyle?
We didn't actually let you present it, but, um, yeah.
That's fine.
You appreciate.
It's fine. Mine's pretty straightforward.
Now, and, and we talked before during the break and trying to keep on a pace. I told him I would quarterback this and just let you guys ask questions.
Thanks, Kyle.
All right, Dustin, do you want to come up? I think the next thing I want to discuss is, um, what it would look like to fold juvenile intake and outreach into community corrections and his vision for that. And, and maybe potentially how we could use the additional portions of the JDC.
Sure, sure. Uh, I do want to correct one thing real quick on what Derek said earlier. My passion is actually the juvenile justice side of things instead of the adult portion. So this is kind of in my wheelhouse. Um, yeah, yeah. Um, while my agency does serve predominantly adult clients, uh, we are the eleventh largest, uh, community corrections agency by client base in the state. Um, I've worked in juvenile justice since two thousand and five, and so that is my passion. Um, as you all are probably aware, a portion of our grant funding that we apply for and receive every year does go to Ken's department to fund some of the juvenile intake services. Um, we fund a portion of salaries and benefits for a couple of his staff. We fund some equipment costs. We fund other miscellaneous costs that come up already. And we do that typically at around eighty thousand dollars a year right now out of our juvenile specific funds. Um, we do operate under the Kansas Department of Corrections standards and the KDOC has standards for juvenile intake and assessment services. Uh, there are several community corrections agencies across the state that actually run that intake program for their district. So, uh, the transition, should the JDC close to folding intake into community corrections, should be pretty smooth. Um, especially if you bring someone like Ken into community corrections, uh, I think that will make that transition even smoother. Uh, so what I was asked to prepare is a proposal on what that would mean. So I've come up with a couple of things. Uh, first is staffing. Um, as Derek mentioned earlier, we would require some additional staff to do this. Uh, one would be the creation of another assistant director position. Uh, and what that would entail is moving our current assistant director who oversees all of our supervision staff and all of our cases, adult and juvenile, on top of administrative duties and shifting that focus to only adult offenders and the adult services that we offer. Uh, and then that would, uh, allow this new assistant director position to just focus on juvenile probation, juvenile intake, programming that we offer to all of our clients, adult and juvenile, and then any other services that we might be touching, like the outreach program that we talked about earlier as well.
So it, it would, in other words, it would provide kind of a neat delineation between you'd have one assistant director focusing on the adult side, one focusing on the juvenile side. And I would have to imagine that's going to be a weight off of Scott, your current director.
Absolutely. Yep.
And can I ask one question?
Of course.
Well, that's involved four counties. Juvenile intake.
Yeah, as juvenile intake currently operates, we serve the four counties in the judicial district. So Franklin, Coffey, Anderson, and Osage. Uh, we would continue to do that with this position as well.
So you're hoping the grant part would cover everything?
We've been told to expect an amount that would cover everything.
So if it doesn't, does that get divided four ways if there is additional for just juvenile intake used for four counties?
I don't know how that's normally broken up between.
Hopefully it doesn't get to that, but I just, I didn't think we'd have this discussion anyhow. So.
Yeah, we'd have that.
It is, we are talking four counties.
We are talking four counties and the judicial district is, is who is charged with implementing community corrections and, and intake also as well in the district. Um, and so for community corrections, uh, our advisory board is who has specified how that program looks for community corrections. Uh, and so that's how we became Franklin County employees and a department in Franklin County. Yet we serve the four counties in the district. Uh, and I imagine that that process on intake would look the exact same. So, um, I will talk a little bit about funding too, uh, later in, in my proposal. Um, on top of the assistant director position, um, I would ask that we create a new full-time intake position. Ken's juvenile services staff currently do some intakes as they come in, um, to the JDC. And we currently have three, uh, currently hired on-call intake staff that serve all four, uh, counties in the district. So no matter what time of day, twenty-four, seven, if a juvenile is arrested, uh, this on-call position might be tasked with, with carrying out that intake in any of the four counties. I would propose that we keep those three on-call positions for that twenty-four, seven service, but also hire a, a new intake position to do business hours or maybe early evening hours intakes. Um, and then that person would also be tasked with, um, kind of expanding what intake currently does. Intake currently does the assessment that you guys heard about earlier. So they score the, the juvenile situation and then determine if they are detained or not. Um, and then I would propose that this position also follows up with that juvenile and that family and refer them to services in the community or deliver services themselves, uh, as far as, uh, skills for the parents, skills for the youth, uh, things like that, and getting them those services early on in their involvement with the juvenile justice system. Instead of waiting for months or, or a year or longer to get those services in place when they finally come to probation. Uh, and so that one position would do those things on top of offer other programming to our juvenile probation clients, our adult probation clients, et cetera.
And, and just for perspective, for comparison sake, and we mentioned this earlier, but in twenty twenty-two, in the JDC, we have, well, between the two departments, I guess, juvenile related, we have twelve full-time employees and four part-time employees. Dustin's proposal would have two down from twelve full-time employees, Ken and his full-time intake, as well as three part-time employees. So you're looking, it would go from sixteen down to five essentially.
And it sounds like some of the services that you would provide to the, were the kind of things that the state wanted to see the juveniles getting when they did this to start with.
Uh, I was sitting in the back of the room listening to this conversation and yes, that was the goal of the reform is instead of incarcerating kids, um, to keep them with their support system, their family, uh, their loved ones, uh, schools that they're familiar with, providers in the community, keep them with those supports and offer them that extra level of programming that they need to get back on the right track. Uh, and I believe that this kind of model would really mimic what we see in other, uh, sites across the country that have implemented these things. Um, there's a specific foundation that I've worked with before, the Annie E. Casey Foundation. Uh, they have a juvenile detention alternatives initiative. Uh, and there are sites across the country that do work just like this. And that's part of what the state looked at when they did this reform back in twenty sixteen. Yeah, the, the Pew charitable trust was a big part of it too, but they were also looking at these other alternatives to detention. And so this is what this would be.
You could still provide these services even though the kid does not actually qualify to go into juvenile detention. You could still, how, how, what kind of authority do you have to be able to put them into that?
That's a good question. With intake, one of the components of that is that, um, intake workers can release a juvenile with conditions. And so those conditions could be referral to a program, referral to services in the community. And, and this position that I'm proposing would follow up with things like that and ensure that those things are done.
We do that there, obviously, but we do make the first thing. There's no teeth to it. I mean, we talking about would add somebody to actually reach out and make contact. I think a lot of that stuff would still take to have somebody to reach out and do that and, and follow up and, and help.
Dustin, you say this is, was the intent, the other parts of the country have kind of gone to this model. What are the outcomes you see? Is it working?
It depends. Uh, you know, it, it really depends on a lot of factors. Um, your, your geographic location, your, your demographic makeup. Um, I had mentioned the last time I was before you all that I visited Albuquerque and that demographic is quite a bit different than what we have here in Kansas. And so they saw a lot of success with models like this, uh, and getting, um, positions such as this interested and involved with the juvenile early on. Uh, they saw a lot of success and they're still seeing the success with that. Um, and you could look at other districts that have tried it too and, and maybe not done so well, you know, to, just based on the things that they have going on there.
We don't make the policy decision. That decision's made for us. It's up to us to do the best to try to implement it, right?
Correct.
I think one of the things that's intriguing to me about, about Dustin's proposal is, you know, we're, they're, yes, you're talking about a reduction of employees, but I think the opportunity is there to actually do more programming and, and more thorough programming. And so it, just ignore the financial ramifications for a second, but under community corrections with Ken and with the full-time intake, I, I, I don't know, I think we have the opportunity to do some pretty cool things. Um, and I think Dustin's the right man to potentially lead that. So I think, I just think there's some intriguing options there.
Well, about what Dustin does in his department, it's incredibly evidence-based. It's very deliberate. It's easy to explain why you do the things you do and it's for a good reason.
It is, and I've already had discussions with other, uh, community corrections directors about programs such as, uh, strengthening families is one of them. Uh, like I mentioned, getting the kids and the parents' skills. Um, tho- those are the types of programs that are evidence-based that we would bring in with this kind of model. Uh, but the other programs that we would offer normally in community corrections are all evidence-based as well. Absolutely.
Yeah, we don't get the state money and we end up having to pay for a couple of positions. It's two positions.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Let me come back to that. Um, I want to pivot to facilities. Um, we've talked about running intake still out of the current structure in the JDC. Um, it is set up for law enforcement to bring in a juvenile, have a secure booking room where they can process, do the intake and assessment, and then go from there. Um, my proposal would be, um, that if the JDC detention portion were to close, that we continue doing intake out of there. Um, as you know, community corrections has three separate spaces here in the annex building and there's just no room to do confidential juvenile intake work in this building. Um, plus we don't have the office space in our current capacity to add the staff that I'm asking for in this proposal. So, uh, my proposal would be to, to use the JDC, uh, in the same capacity now. And if we wanted to look at something like moving community corrections as a whole over to the JDC, office space was mentioned a minute ago, um, that would certainly take some major renovations. Um, but if you look at the layout of the JDC, they've got that secure booking area. They've got a lobby area with secure interview rooms. They've got some administration area. They've got a classroom and then a big open day room area with the cells around the perimeter. Uh, that area, the day room area specifically would be the bulk of the renovations that community corrections would really need to move in. Uh, and so I don't have any figures for that. Again, that would be something that we would need to have someone come in and look at. If that were an option to turn that into office space, it would be a major renovation because that building is specifically built for juvenile detention with all the plumbing, the HVAC, the cells. Um, it is just not currently an office space and, and it's not going to be.
With, with your current operation being what it is and with technology being what it is, I mean, are you confident that you could still operate and operate well with remaining with part of your staff here and part of your staff down in the JDC?
It would be a challenge, um, but it's, it's a welcome challenge. I think the, the intake portion of the JDC is, is purpose-built for that and, and I would hate to see that used for anything else. Um, and so that's certainly something to work through. Um, also, if we were considering moving community corrections into the JDC as it currently stands, without any renovation right now, uh, we could change our model of how we see our clients. Currently, we see our clients inside of our individual office space. Uh, and with those interview rooms at the front of the JDC, we could just change to seeing those clients there, which is adjacent to their lobby area. Uh, and having our employees work in cubicles or desks in a big open day room area, even if it does have cells around the perimeter. So there are things that we could entertain to move, um, community corrections over to that space, absent any major renovations.
They'd all have their own bathrooms.
That is true.
Have to.
Um, and showers. Um, what that would do, uh, moving community corrections over to that building is, would free up those three spaces here in the annex. Um, and we could talk about specific numbers on rent, but those three spaces are things that we pay rent for out of our grant funding every year. So those spaces would then be available for the county to rent out to whomever.
I, I, and, and I don't disagree with that. I don't disagree with any of this, but I do want to keep it in perspective. I, I don't think these particular decisions would have to be made in the short term. And that's, I guess, the point I'm trying to make in asking Dustin, you know, if he could continue operations. I mean, yes, it's not ideal. Um, and yes, I, I think we should brainstorm over time. Is that a move we could make? What would it cost? What would be ideal? But there is no short-term urgency to, to making that particular move.
Yeah.
Uh, long-term, one of the, the ideals is to have a more one-stop-shop approach to all of our clients, adult and juvenile. And so having all of our staff and our programs run from one space would really be the ideal. Uh, we had a, a program, uh, site review by KDOC last week and they were commending us on trying to go for that one-stop-shop approach. And so, um, just long-term, that is something that I would want to work for. Yes. So let's talk about funding then. Um, we are scheduled to receive approximately a hundred and forty thousand dollars in additional funding just on the juvenile side alone in fiscal year twenty-three. And if you'll recall, that funding was specifically, uh, set out by the legislature for salary increases, staffing increases, and I wish it were for staffing increases as well. But, um, I have reached out to KDOC for clarification on if we were to take over intake, uh, what that would mean for this specific funding, and I have not heard anything back. Uh, but since we already fund a portion of Ken's salary and some of his staff's salary, I don't see any reason why we can't use this one hundred and forty thousand dollars to absorb, uh, these two positions that I'm asking for. And that money, plus shifting the current assistant director over to adult services, um, I believe. the current assistant director over to adult services, I believe that I can cover what I'm asking for as far as salary and benefits from the grant funding alone. And that's why I'm not proposing that the county would pay for any of those salaries and benefits for these positions.
And Dustin, for the board's education, when the state identifies this money as being for juvenile staff, it has to be for, like, we, we've talked about it, there's no clever way we could funnel that to the adult side. And absent doing this, Dustin and I's challenge was going to be, how do we spend that money? Because they're on the juvenile side, because there arguably wasn't enough there to spend it on, which is what makes the timing of this, you know, fortuitous, I guess, because if we were to do this, there you go. Like, there's your two staff, and there's your use of those dollars, and it just, it makes perfect sense. Just something to think about.
And I did mention rent, because part of my proposal would be that if the grant can cover the salaries and benefits for these positions, what I would ask for, for community corrections, is for Franklin County to not assess my department rent, because that is quite a big chunk of what we spend our grant funding on every year, is the rent for the spaces in this building. And so I would ask for little to no rent assessed in this proposal. So with that savings from the rent, that's the, kind of what really gives us enough wiggle room to make these positions possible.
And I think that that should be an ongoing discussion between the county and community corrections. I do think we should waive a portion of the rents, and we've had this discussion several times. The state wants to see the county contributing to community corrections. They want to see the counties putting, you know, county tax dollars into those operations, and that helps Dustin come grant award time. It helps us potentially get more money. So I do support that. The exact amount, I still think, would need to be discussed. Maybe it is the full amount, but we would certainly need to bring Janet into that discussion and discuss the implications for the annex fund. I mean, the money's going to get paid from somewhere, but that would be, you know, that is going to be money. I do think we should, yeah, rebate or not charge them some amount of rent, and we'll have to come up with that money somewhere. But when we were looking at paying $130,000 before, and what is your rent, about 45 a year?
Roughly 45,000 a year.
I mean, we're still far, far ahead of where we would have been, so certainly think it's a fair proposal.
And with that, I will be happy to stand for any questions you all might have.
We did, any renovations to move the community corrections down to the juvenile detention center? Would the other three counties contribute to the renovation then?
That's a good question. I don't have the answer to that. I will say, as far as contributions go, Anderson County does contribute by giving us an office space within their courthouse for the officer that covers that caseload. Just yesterday, we moved from a private location in Coffee County, and they are now providing us with an office space within the Coffee County courthouse as well. Neither of those counties assess us any rent for that space. But Osage County, we currently don't have a physical location, and we are using the basement of the city hall on just a kind of a mutual agreement. So I don't know that other counties would contribute to a major renovation or not.
I guess our big payment on that, no matter what happens, our big payments continue to go on.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Yeah, we'll continue making payments on the facility. I think the more pertinent decision for the board, and I guess the more pertinent number, is that for $500,000 in annual operating costs. Do you think that there is enough there to justify, in addition to our bond payments, the $400,000 extra it would cost to continue operating the JDC? I mean, I think that's going to be the crux of the decision that the five of you have to make.
I think I'm kind of with Cole. At this point, we don't need to do anything with that. I think we really need to, whatever decision we make, then be able to move forward and just kind of sit back and, did we make the right decision? You know, if you do something else with it, then, and you realize that, oh, this was wrong, you can't go back. If you, if you've done something else with it, so you gotta, yeah.
Make the decisions incrementally.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions for Dustin before we kind of jump into our last section here? And we're about done.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Dustin. Ken, you want to come up for just a second? I just want to touch on other closures. Is it Leavenworth County that recently shut theirs down?
Last year, yes.
And that was last year?
Yeah.
And Douglas, given their numbers, I mean, they were real close. Is that?
I believe it was 2019 is when Douglas County went through kind of the same thing, kind of, you know, test the viability of their JDC. So they, they had their hearings, they, they met with their commissioners and had people come in, just like we are. And I think they ended up keeping their detention center open, because their commissioners and the school boards up there really wanted their day school program to continue. And without JDC, can't have a day school. So that's, I think, what kept their JDC open at the time. But they had gone through it. Leavenworth County, last year, they had an issue with, with COVID, a big outbreak, which they started farming everybody out to Wyandotte County, because they didn't have the staff and things because of COVID. And then, of course, during their annual audit, I think, is, talking to the, the previous director there, he said that they had some issues with their building, and instead of spending the money to fix that, they decided to just continue to farm out to Wyandotte County. So, because Wyandotte County just built their own new facility back in, I think they opened it back in 2020, right before COVID kind of hit. So none of us have been there to, to check it out because of COVID, basically, so.
And, and how many employees, I know what we're budgeted for, but how many employees do you have today?
We have six right now.
Including yourself?
Seven, including myself.
So you have six employees. Kyle, how many vacancies do you have in the jail right now? And, and there could be potentially a couple more on the horizon? Now, that's a snapshot in time, but they've historically struggled with keeping full staff. If we were to do this today, and we're not, nobody's asking you to, but we would have a spot, we would have a job offer for Ken and every one of his employees. I mean, Kyle could take five of the six right now, and, and sounds like in short order, probably could take the sixth one as well. I mean, hypothetically, they would have to interview and, and pass backgrounds, do all the requirements to work there. I'm not, but I'm, I'm just trying to illustrate that there are opportunities within the organization, so that hopefully we could get everyone an offer.
Dispatch and maintenance and, I mean, there's plenty of
Yeah.
Other, yeah.
Well, Dustin said he's pretty much fully staffed now, but there might be down-the-road opportunities too, so.
I mean, retention is an issue, and I anticipate it remaining an issue for the long term. So I think we'll be able to give them opportunities. And then the last thing that I would just touch on, and I think we've given you a pretty thorough presentation, but, but if, just from a financial perspective, and there's more to this than that, but you all know what we're trying to do for our employees. You know we have retention issues. We know that we're behind our competitors in a lot of areas. We know these are additional tax dollars that are going to be above and beyond our pay plan and our cost of living raises. I think that we owe it to the taxpayers to take a long, critical look at our operations and see if there is something that, that we can give back, or make sure that we're as relatively as efficient as we can be, you know, before we, we potentially seek extra money. And this is an opportunity to do that if you are inclined, but that's very much just the financial view. And I, I think that's all I have. Any questions for Ken, for myself, for Janet, for Kyle, for Dustin? Is there, is there an angle that we haven't viewed this from? I mean, I've asked the team over the last couple of days, and I don't know that we're aware of anything that we're really leaving out here.
Well, I think we've got an overview now, and now we need to have the decision, the decision discussion on what we're going to do going forward.
And
And I think it needs to be done fairly quickly.
Well, yeah, it does, just from a budgeting perspective and getting you guys a good proposed budget. So is, you know, is, obviously, we're going to reconvene in a week. Is, is a week enough time? You want me to put this on the agenda for a potential decision next week?
I think that was such a thought-out, well-presented, by our informative discussion that I can't imagine a lot of follow-ups. I don't, I didn't see a lot of question marks hanging after we had that. In 12 years I've been here, we've tackled a lot of issues, and that's probably one of the best presentations we've ever had.
I just want to let you guys know from a timeline standpoint, Derek and I have visited at length about, you know, the budget and the timeline. And we, we had planned to put together your budget books for you guys to review, hopefully in the first week of June, and then again, have your study sessions on the 13th and 14th for the budget. So definitely, if we make this decision, you know, within the next week, we would be ready to, to present those numbers to you guys in the regular timeframe of the budget. As you know, we'll have to, have to make a determination in early July whether we're going to exceed the revenue-neutral rate. So I think trying to stay on track to have your budget study sessions on the 13th and the 14th gives your individuals, Derek and I, and other people that we have involved, like Amy in HR, gives us time to review all of the considerations that you give us during the study session to fold that into the budget and get you a product back by early July, so we can make a determination of whether you choose to exceed the revenue-neutral rate or not. So I think next week would, would be great if we have a decision, but like Derek said, we want to make sure that you guys have all the information that you need to make a good decision. So if you feel like you need more time, we would definitely try very quickly to bring back information that you need.
The only missing piece of the puzzle is how much COVID has affected all this, and we don't know. And we, that, we can't, we have no idea.
I agree. And to me, therein lies the advantage of just not getting hasty in terms of putting something else in the facility.
Absolutely.
Because i- if we do this, and then let's say there is some big reform, and juvenile detention becomes more viable, then literally we have the framework right in front of us. We've done it before. You know, I would fully expect Ken to still be here, and, and then we're just, it's, it becomes funding it, which will do that the same way we do everything, which is very cautiously and responsibly. So I think there's a huge advantage to just taking this piece by piece, as Commissioner Waymire said, and just approaching it very cautiously. But you're right, Ian, if we learn that COVID has had a dramatic effect, again, we would have the ability to reverse course.
But we also are not using COVID numbers. We're using COVID numbers to determine what, where, how we want to go forward. So that's good. Anyway.
Next week?
Next week?
Yeah, I think.
Next week?
Yes. We'll never know. Okay. I think I never dreamed we'd have this conversation five or six years ago. We may have it again. I mean, you're just living for today. You got to do what you got to do. But I don't think we'll ever have the only, because too many things keep changing.
Okay, next week?
I want to thank all of you for being here and taking the time to listen. So I really appreciate that. I know this is going to be a tough decision, but whatever your decision is, obviously, you know, that's, it'll be, at least it'll be an informed decision. So but I just want to thank you guys. And if you need any information or any extra data or anything else from different years, please get ahold of me, and I will gladly give that to you. So.
Well, and while you're here, I just, I know we've been here a long time. Just a brief moment, I want to thank Ken. I mean, we, we've been having this discussion, and Ken's been aware of it. Ken and I have had this discussion for several years. And certainly that puts stress on him, and he has continued to manage his staff and continued to keep the JDC operating well, with this discussion being out there. So Ken, I appreciate you, appreciate you continuing to perform your duties.
Thank you, Ken. Appreciate everything you've been doing. Thank you, Dustin, for your presentation, too. Appreciate that.
Dave, do you anticipate the salt bids taking two and a half hours or?
I, I've got quite a lengthy report on it, but I'll cut it down.
Go for it, Dave.
Quickly, commissioners, this is something that we do every year. We participate for a number of years in the, Douglas County sends out bids for salt. We're included in that bid, and the results are back. Hutchison Salt Company was a low bidder again this year at $54 a ton. We estimated about 1,500 tons that we would need, which comes to about $81,000. I don't anticipate, once we start, you know, it's an inexact science estimating how much salt we're going to need, but I don't anticipate needing the full $81,000. But I would like to move ahead with that approval, so that we can start making arrangements for those salt deliveries to replenish ahead of this fall.
You may not have an answer to that, but being as we've partnered, do you have any clue to what the market is out there for, like, an individual county trying to bid the same thing?
I, I do not. I haven't studied that. I know there, there's a couple of different ways that folks can do that. I think teaming with other counties like we do with Douglas County, there's some, some buying power whenever we team up like that. And so, short of studying it to really know for sure, this seems like it's working well for us and that we get reasonable prices. You know, I showed here, last year it was a little cheaper. The year before it was $54 a ton. So I don't think the price moves a great deal. Plus, they bring the material to us. We're not having to send our trucks to go and pick it up. I know other counties, that's, they've got people that, that's what they do every week. They make the trip out and back and replenish their salt that way.
Were we pickers? That from Lawrence?
No, they, we, so Douglas County bids it, and each one of the organizations that's a part of that bid, we make arrangements directly with the company to, to haul, and they bring it to us. It's part, it's, those fees are included in their bid.
You have a question? For the motion, I make a motion to approve awarding the salt bid to Hutchison Salt Company in the amount of $81,000.
So, second.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Thottermeyer?
Yeah.
Chair Don.
Yes. Okay, Dave, we'll talk about Peterbilt.
Yeah, one of our in-dump trucks is, has been giving us some, some issues. This truck, we looked at it in-house. Our computer system that, that we use to troubleshoot this, these kinds of things only goes so far. And this one, we sent out of house due to the, the depth of the problem, the codes that it was telling us. us. Um, and Peterbilt took a look at it and they made some repairs, um, but once they made those repairs and they tested it again, additional error codes appeared and led to, uh, to the injectors. We have two of them that are bad, the other two are, or the other four are, are kinda on their last legs. If we were to just replace the two, uh, we might get, you know, a, a couple of days to a couple of months out of it, but eventually we would end, end up right back in the shop, uh, needing to replace those injectors. Uh, it is quite expensive to do this, but these are trucks that we rely on day in and day out to, uh, to haul the rock that we put on our roads, uh, to haul brush away when we have, uh, uh, those types of events, and certainly we use these trucks to push snow, uh, and take care of, um, uh, snow and ice and those sorts of things during the winter. So, uh, and it is a truck, uh, we anticipate on our replacement list to get this replaced in twenty twenty-six. Uh, we're still, obviously, a few years away from that, um, and we would like to move forward with this repair and, uh, hope that the other, the, the other trucks that were purchased about this same time don't start having these same issues. If that starts to happen, uh, we may look at, you know, an alternative to, um, uh, replacing these in twenty twenty-six, but I'm not ready to throw in the towel on these trucks just yet. I'm hoping that this is just a one-off situation.
Does that nineteen thousand include the service you've already had, the repairs you've already done? So not all of it's just for the injectors?
That is correct.
Other questions? Provin- a motion be, I make the motion to authorize Kansas City Peterbilt Incorporated to complete repairs to the twenty fifteen Peterbilt three forty-six, that's truck number fifty thirty-one, in the amount of nineteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars and eighty cents.
Motion approved.
Second.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yeah.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Chair done.
Yes. Hey, Derek, last one's yours.
Yeah, this is an extension of a discussion that we had a, at a recent study session regarding, uh, uh, executive coordinator position. I, I wanna be crystal clear, um, I am not asking to add staff. That, that's not what this is. So my HR department currently consists of a director, a payroll specialist, an HR technician, and an administrative assistant. What I would, I actually like to do is, is remove staff and, and realize some efficiencies. I would like to remove the HR tech position entirely. So take that, not budget for it, not staff it, and that's pure savings. Take the admin assistant position and make it an executive coordinator. Put a few more duties on it, and current admin assistant sits at a grade seventeen. This new position would be a grade twenty. There is no grade eighteen or nineteen in our pay plan, so we're just bumping it up a grade, but be in the same grade as like an office manager, and there are a few others. And then you've got the attached job description. I would anticipate this position assisting with tourism as well as assisting Paul Bean with FCDC, assisting myself, assisting HR. This just, because we're adding duties, this bump in, in, in pay grade would allow us to hopefully get better applicants for the position because they're gonna have to do more. We have room in the budget because of the gap in what my current HR director is making and what my former director made. So I say all of that to say, this, this addition will result in significant savings, um, to our budget, ultimately the taxpayers. So any questions about this?
Since tourism will be part of their position, will part of their salary come from TGT?
Absolutely. Yep. And, and I've told you that, you know, our communications director position's about to become vacant, depending on the direction that we go there, um, that position may very well have tourism duties as well, um, and a portion of that could be paid with TGT funds. But yes, I fully expect to use those monies to do that. It's a great question.
Other questions, so Derek?
I think you pretty well answered my question on that, that you're still gonna have a tourism director?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Are you still gonna, well, we'll talk about it later.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, affirmative motion, may I make the motion authorizing the addition of the executive coordinator position to grade number twenty of the Franklin County pay plan?
Second. Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yeah.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson? Chair done.
Yes.
Okay, our next meeting is June first.
Say, I, I, I don't have a staff report, but I don't know if any of my staff, um, and, and maybe you're intentionally skipping that, and I don't blame you, Roy. Um, I just, I wanted to give my, you know, my folks the opportunity if.
Okay, Sheriff, you haven't talked today, so come on up.
We will, listen, we will.
I'll try to make this quick, but I do need to, um, let you know something because I've already had to do television and radio interviews in reference to this. Um, as you know, we, um, uh, it's been a couple of years ago now, we, uh, became part of a, uh, task force, um, with the Northeast Kansas Drug Task Force to address all of our issues because the, what we were seeing in our county, um, was larger amounts of drugs, and we needed a, a bigger, um, investigative arm to help with that, and so we teamed up with Johnson County and Miami County for that purpose. And as I have shared, most of the investigations, the larger ones that we're seeing, um, are more, um, related to cartel activity, and that's where we're getting the drugs and, uh, our seizures and things like that. Um, without getting into too much detail, we do have other activities that are going on and that take place here in our county that, that we have to address. So along those lines, um, recently Senator Marshall's office reached out to me and asked if I would, uh, participate in a, in a, what, a border summit, um, with him, with him and his staff and, uh, four other sheriffs. So last week, and the end of last week and through the weekend, we were down, um, at the southern border, um, working with, uh, Texas DPS and Border Patrol, um, Homeland Security. And so, um, it was very informative. We got to meet with some landowners down there, business owners, and met with the personnel down there, got a lot of briefings. Uh, the purpose of that is to kinda see firsthand what's going on, to give us an idea of the things that we need to be looking for on our end, um, as well as figuring out and hearing firsthand what we're seeing up here, how much of that is driven by demand, how much of that is by, by cartel activity it, itself, and then how much of that is directed and just being affected by current policy, so that we know how to address those things on our end. Um, some of the other things we were able to do, um, was we see the tactics that are put in place on our side of the border from, mostly with, uh, Border Patrol and Customs and Border Protection, uh, and DPS to find out, just so we can see how it is that they are, that they're operating, so that it gives us an idea of those that are coming across as smugglers, the steps that they're taking to avoid and defeat those type of practices, because those are the things that we're gonna be seeing here on our end as well, on those investigations and then, and, uh, anything out on the highways. So, um, overall, it was a, it was a very informative trip, um, and it didn't hurt that we got to spend time with our senator so he could hear the things that we're dealing with here in, in Franklin County and have his ear to say, hey, these are some of the things that we would like to see your office do from the federal level that we think could, could make an impact and could help us here. So, um, that's it in a nutshell, don't wanna take up a lot of more, more time, it's been a long meeting. I'll be happy to talk with any of you afterwards if you have any, any, uh, specific questions, but, uh.
You look good on TV.
What's that?
You look good on TV.
Thanks.
I mean, I think it's great that, it shows the, the kind of leadership that we have, that you were asked to be a part of that, so, yeah, absolutely.
That's great, Sheriff, thanks. Casey, uh, do you have anything? David, you have anything else?
I will just remind you all that we have a ribbon cutting for the Adopt a Bike, uh, program and, and the new cargo container on Friday morning at eight-thirty out at our, um, out at our shop, so please come if you can.
Just one quick reminder, um, I discussed with Dawn a little bit ago and realized there may be some confusion. The filing deadline for, um, the offices on the ballot, um, which include the three county commissioner seats, precinct committee people, um, City of Pomona has some seats on the ballot, so pretty much everything on the ballot, the filing deadline is still June first at noon. The only thing that's been extended are the state and federal seats that required redistricting. So the, we will now go to having two senate seats, but that, those seats are not up for election this time. Um, the existing people will still continue to hold them, assuming they are in the district. Um, and then we have two house seats that will be up. Um, now, the fifty-ninth House District will cover all of Franklin County except for Franklin Township, Wellsville, and that will continue to be the fifth House District that holds that portion of our county. So those, those two seats will be on the ballot, and that filing deadline, along with the, the federal, um, race that's on our ballot for the third congressional district, which we've switched from the second to the third, those will all be June tenth at noon. So just wanna clarify that, so everyone knows. Filing deadline for everything we consider local will be June, June first at noon.
Question? Dawn?
I don't know nothing.
I'm not. Is it over here?
Real quick, I went to Aaron Laurie's reception, um, our, and, and, you know, we are losing a good person, um, in, in that, and just a shout out to Blaine Finch, who is not running for reelection, but has represented Ottawa and a lot of Franklin County in the House, uh, for five terms, and, um, just appreciate the work he's in over there, and that's all I have.
Okay, Memorial Day is Monday, uh, so there's no study session, and we are adjourned. So move.